Good morning. Welcome to the April 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. We are opening to closed session. Madam Clerk.
For today's session or last week?
Yeah, let's report out and then thank you.
Closed session items from the April 20, 2021 meeting. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, reexisting litigation, Michael Scott Taylor et al. versus County of Calaveras, United States District Court, case number 118CV00760DADBAM. Board action, no reportable action. Item two, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Item three, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Item four, conference with legal counsel, reanticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Board action, no reportable action. Closed session items for today, April 27, 2021. Item one, public employment pursuant to government code 54657B1. Titles: County Administrative Officer, Planning Director. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, reanticipation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
At this point, we'll open to public comment on either or both of these items.
We have no public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adjourn into closed session.
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome back to the April 27, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we don't have anything to report out on closed session, and we'll be continuing closed session at the end of the day on item two. At this time, I would like to do a pledge allegiance. Madam Clerk, would you like to lead us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, my mask sucked in my mouth through partway through that. We'll move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Yes, we have Lisa Medina.
Oh, good.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, respective board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. This coming Saturday, we have another free rabies and microchip clinic for our Calaveras community. At our last clinic, we vaccinated over 100 animals and microchipped 66. Those 66 fur babies will have a better chance of finding their way home to their humans if they get lost. So, if your fur baby is due for their rabies vaccine or needs to be microchipped, please come by and see us at the Government Center this coming Saturday from 9:00 to noon. Dr. Judy Rengat and our partners with Focus will be there to say hello and thank you for keeping our fur babies and our humans safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further staff comments?
None at this time.
With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Board and County residents. Sam Leach, I'm your Interim Services Director. Is the audio working okay?
Your microphone's cutting in and out a little bit, Mr. Leach.
Okay. I'm gonna have to... Sorry, but the connection is not sustaining.
Do we lose him completely, or is he just checking his connections?
I think he's checking his connection. He was moving around.
Thank you. Love the picture of the poppies. They're already past blooming pretty much at this time.
Yeah, that was a mess.
Yeah. I was hoping the rain this weekend would help.
It was not that bad. It wasn't raining. The forecast was almost two inches. I don't think we got too much.
Just an announcement to the public. We are open to the public to coming in. It's posted on the agenda, in case you haven't read it yet, at the header. But at this time, the Board of Supervisors is accepting the public in for comment and viewing of the board session with 50% protocol, I believe, and spacing, and please be respectful of wearing a face mask when you come into the boardroom. Thank you. And thank you for the suggestion, Ms. Coway. I appreciate it. It's a good one.
Mr. Leach is trying. I'm going to move to another line.
What do you think?
A little more about the weather, though.
I wonder if you go on to general public comment and then come back.
You know, that's not a bad suggestion. We're gonna go ahead and go to general public comment at this time, and then we'll come back to the public health update once Mr. Leach gets his situation situated.
Chair Stoppa, can you hear me now?
I can hear you clearly, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on with the public health update.
Yeah, I was waiting to be let in. Sorry for that. The connection has been pretty rough over here at Colombo for a few days.
Okay.
But everything's coming through clear, and I can provide the public health update now?
Yeah, you're more than clear.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you for having me these past few months as the Interim Health and Human Services Director. I just want to take a few minutes to give this last public health update from yours truly. Getting into the data, we have completed 39,670 COVID tests since the start of the pandemic. We've had 2,075 COVID positive cases. We have 13 active cases as of now. We've had 2,010 recovered and zero current hospitalizations. We are at 52 fatalities, and doses administered to Calaveras residents currently stand at 28,524. Now, this week, we are running mostly second-dose clinics, catching up from some larger first-dose clinics that we had done several weeks ago. So, this week, we're actually doing Frogtown today, tomorrow, and Thursday, but the bulk of that is second-dose vaccines. So, those of you that are still looking for a place to get a vaccine, please turn to myturn.ca.gov. So, all of our Calaveras County clinics, including the Saturday option at Mark Twain and any other options outside of the federally-run pharmacy programs are gonna be found on myturn.ca.gov. That includes our clinics, Mark Twain's clinics, and any other future clinics that get established through the county. Everyone 16 and over is eligible. We are, let's see, testing those pre-testing today at Ironstone from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, if you're still looking for a place to get COVID testing, your option is to go today at Ironstone. There are also several pharmacy options in the area. There's always the Optum Serve site up in Sonora, as well as a public option out in Jackson. We remain in the orange tier, in the blueprint for a safer economy. We moved to that tier on April 20 and continue to hold steady there. So, I believe this is my last public health update, pending today's appointment of the new permanent director, and I just want to say that I appreciate you guys putting up with me the past few months and for the public support, the other department head's support, and for the board's support in partnering with us through this very complex and difficult time. So, with that, happy to take questions on anything COVID pandemic-related for public health.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Sam, for stepping in the way you did. I know it was a hurricane when you stepped in and what's transpired since then. You've done a great job, you and your staff both. You handled yourself very well. So, I just want to say thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Coway?
Mr. Leach, thank you. You were even available on weekends, which I didn't expect. But, yeah, I agree with Supervisor Toffenelli. You came in in the thick of it, and now we're trying to wind down, and we are where we are because of the work that you've done, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Leach. You've not just been available on the weekends. Anytime you receive a message, you promptly return a call, even when it's... I've let you know, you don't have to answer until tomorrow. You know, you've been a cornerstone to keeping the situation going the way it has, and just words aren't enough, and we're more than happy to retain you in your original position, and well-deserved, sir. Words can't say thank you enough.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I really appreciate all of your guys' support. I know I said that already, but I also appreciate, you know, going back to probation, my home, where I belong, and with my team over here, and look forward to continuing to serve Calaveras County. I have no plans to go anywhere. And also, with partnering with Ms. Allen, you know, once she's appointed in the fight against COVID, like, we're not going anywhere there either. Probation is still helping, you know, work security at the clinics, and, you know, anything we can do to pitch in and make sure that we, you know, transition this right and that nobody feels like they got left hanging or that we missed a step. I don't think that's the case. We're rounding the corner, and it's time to start moving past this and reimagining Calaveras County, you know, post-COVID, even better than we were before. So, thank you all.
Any further board comment? Oh, Ms. Coway?
Mr. Leach, you did ask for COVID comments. In your discussions with the state, do you have any inkling of where we might be going in terms of the tier system come June or sooner? Thank you.
Well, the state has made it fairly clear that they plan on scrapping the tier system June 15. Of course, there's some caveats in there, but it sounds like June 15 is kind of our date to, you know... I have Colleen Rodriguez's voice in my head telling me, yeah, no, COVID is not gonna be over June 15. But we will be transitioning out of the blueprint for a safer economy, according to the state, at that time. Now, what will be... What will remain after that? The devil's in the details. We'll see what remains. You know, they've been pretty clear that they're still gonna expect masks for indoor gatherings for a while. You know, and we'll see if they learn more about the variants. I'm sure our county health officer will work with our new director and keep us apprised of that, but it'll be an ever-evolving situation and, you know, balance between science and politics and, you know, public will. So, it'll be interesting, but I believe that our current blueprint and structure will go away June 15. It's been pretty clearly communicated.
Mr. Leach, what about the health order? Do you think that will be lifted or remain in place?
I don't have any information to share on the health order. I think we've asked Colleen, if you want to weigh in on that, you're welcome to. I don't have any specific information. I haven't heard anything on that being lifted yet.
Hi, it's Colleen Rodriguez, Deputy Director of Public Health. Yes, Sam, we've asked the state repeatedly what the status of the health order will be, and they have dodged the question, so we don't have any information at this time.
Thank you, Colleen. And Supervisor Coway, you know, to be clear, over the last week, week and a half, as you could imagine, I've gotten short timers, and Colleen has been continuing to stick to a pretty rigorous schedule of calls, and, you know, we get texts from CDPH on a Saturday morning saying there's a call in three hours, and it's a lot to keep up with. So, I'd be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge the amazing work that Colleen has done and that she's still in this fight. You know, she hasn't really got a break, her team doesn't get a break. So, we've been working as things have gotten a little less chaotic, but I personally haven't kept up with the normal rotation of seven days a week calls from the state and announcements on short notice. It's a ton to keep up with over time, and Colleen deserves some recognition for continuing to be in that fight.
Agreed, Mr. Leach. Thank you very much, Colleen. You're not forgotten, and you'll still be there in the future. So, you know, working on a year and a quarter right now of just COVID, and not to mention the service prior to that. Any further board comments, questions? I'll open it to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay. Any final questions or statements? Thank you, Mr. Leach. We appreciate your time. Says he's talking, but he's not talking, so...
Yeah, sorry. You know, I think we forgot about Doug Archer. I don't know, it's probably too late for that. Now, he already called for public comment, but totally sorry. That's what happened when my video went out, and I totally spaced out on my partner there. Is Doug on the call? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Anything you want to add, Mr. Archer?
You know, I don't have too much to add, other than Saturday, we only did about 250 doses in our clinic, not because we didn't have space. So, you know, if we can just continue pushing it out there and letting people know we're available on Saturdays for vaccines, they can use the MyTurn platform to get scheduled. That would be good. And I would echo all of the same comments about Sam. Sam, it was a pleasure working side by side with you. I know you aren't going anywhere. I don't usually get too involved in probation stuff, so... But I appreciate the partnership and looking forward to a continued partnership with the county.
Well, thanks for all your support, Doug, and sorry if I spaced out on you.
That's okay. I just got back from vacation, so I'm catching up on anything, everything anyway, so...
I just have one question. With the amount of people coming in, are we still looking at walk-ins at this time for either Frogtown or Mark Twain?
We are... I'll have to check on the exact process with our clinic director, but, yeah, we, I mean, we still, we have capacity. Advertising for walk-ins gets a little challenging up until the last moment because, you know, if we don't have enough walk-in space. So, I mean, I would think by Friday afternoon for a Saturday clinic, we would know if we can, how many walk-ins we can accommodate.
Makes sense, makes sense. And just stay on the right side of that probation thing, Mr. Archer.
Yeah, we don't need to see him here, Doug. We will take walk-ins at the majority of our clinics. You know, one thing, though, is, actually, a couple things. One, you know, you don't know what you're gonna get. Like, you might be walking in, and we're gonna have one specific type of vaccine for that walk-in appointment, whereas, you know, you can go online and, you know, do what you want to do. The other thing is, you know, we encourage people... If we've got a clinic that you know is open from 9:00 to 4:00, we don't really need walk-ins, you know, showing up at 3:59. You know, we've got to get these vials, so we try to not waste doses. And so, we, you know, it's important to make sure that they run to account that is, you know, consistent with the number of doses that we get out of each vial. So, Colleen, did I miss anything there? You want to clarify anything?
No, I think you've got it. The one thing I did just want to alert the public to is that both the federal government and the state government have cleared Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and so that's just as a reminder, that is the one-dose vaccine that is available. And we will be doing one-dose vaccines today, actually, today, tomorrow, and Thursday at Frogtown. So, if people are interested in that, we did put it onto MyTurn, but you can also walk in to get those for the next three days as well. So, just wanted to clarify that part. Thanks.
Well, I know where I'm going very much. But if there's nothing further, we'll move on? Thank you. We'll move on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. And another reminder that we are open to the public, if you did not hear this, you weren't on earlier, to the public being present at the board chambers with 50% capacity, spacing, and please be respectful of the masks.
We do not have public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any board members that would like to pull an item? Any staff that would like to pull an item? Public?
I do not see anyone.
Very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion on the remainder or entirety of the consent agenda.
I move the consent, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. A motion by Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second? Your light's on, Ms. Coway. Thank you for your second, Ms. Coway. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes on a five-oh of the board. With that, we'll... Let's see, we're still really good on time. So, we'll move on to... We're gonna go ahead and move item 16 to the front of the regular agenda for Public Health Services. So, are we ready to go, Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, sorry about that. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. And I am happy to bring before you today a resolution appointing Cory Allen to our Health and Human Services Agency Director. And we do have Ms. Allen with us today, and so she has the opportunity to address the board. Cory, you're muted.
This is a classic. I'm also cut off slightly. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Did you want to speak first, or shall I say some words?
I will give you the floor.
Thank you. I am thrilled to be here today. I am hoping that we can really step into this new time that we're in with courage, and just being here today, meeting with the staff, I can see that this team is ready. So, I thank you for inviting me to be here today. We have work to do, and I want to thank Sam Leach for the incredible work that he has done in the past four and a half months. He is absolutely the superstar that has helped take this agency moving forward. Let's not forget, we are in a worldwide pandemic, but that pandemic is very local here in Calaveras County, and our team here is poised, they're ready, and we're ready to adapt and make whatever changes we need to do to really reach in and lean in and work towards wellness and health in this community. So, with that, I just want to say thank you for inviting me here today.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Ms. Coway?
Ms. Allen, I was at a CSAC conference last week, and I made sure to thank the Tuolumne Supervisors at the conference for your being over here and other things.
Thank you. I just can I say welcome and thank you for joining Calaveras County. Look forward to working with you.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I just want to say, Ms. Allen, welcome to the staff.
I'm excited. I know that we have a lot of work to do. As I've said, we are all in, on board. The team has been incredibly supportive. I've had you as a board, and I appreciate hearing your kind words. So, let's get to it.
Any public comment?
This is Sam. I just want to welcome Cory in publicly and say congratulations on your appointment, and you've got a great team there, a great team of managers, and also just a lot of people at every layer of the organization that want to serve our public and are depending on you to do good things. So, best wishes to you. I look forward to being a partner here at the county, and we're all rooting for you. So, best wishes.
Thank you, Chief.
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to thank you for crossing the line, coming over here to Calaveras County. Look forward to working with you. A lot of good prospects moving forward in Calaveras County, and it's, you know, so, you know, bright and sunny future, hopefully, you know? Hopefully, we see a little light at the end of the tunnel through everything we had to go through across the world in the state. And with that, if there's no further public... Or, I'm sorry, board comments, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. So move. Thank you, Mr. Guerminde.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Is there anything else you would like to say, Cory, before we make a vote?
I do. Just thank you so much to this team. They have been incredibly welcoming. I do know that we are going to adapt. We're going to lean in and be very responsive to the community's need moving forward. These past four to twelve to fifteen months feels like it's been a lifetime, and none of us have had an experience in our lifetimes as what we're seeing right now with this pandemic. So that said, there are other impacts of a pandemic that the Health and Human Services Agency is engaged in, and we will continue to stay engaged in that work. You're going to see a lot of change in a way that's going to really reach into your community. But everything's going to happen in concert with our partners, with this team here, and with your board. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Cory. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Five-oh vote of the board. Thank you. You have a wonderful day. With that, we will be going back to item fourteen. Oh, we did go to sixteen. We just did it. Oh, fifteen. My apologies. Sixteen. Item sixteen. All right. Public Health Services. Authorize the board chair to sign an agreement where Renee Ramirez, M.D., to serve as the Calaveras County Health Officer for the period of April twenty-seventh, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2022, for the not-to-exceed amount of $194,133.38, and adopt a resolution appointing Renee Ramirez, M.D. as the Calaveras County Health Officer effective April twenty-seventh, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2022, in line with the aforementioned agreement, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to enter into amendments to the agreement so long as it does not modify the not-to-exceed value of the agreement. That was a mouthful.
Well, thank you, Chair Stoppa. This is Sam Leach. I realize that as of a couple of minutes ago, I'm no longer the interim HHS Director, but that said, I don't, I don't think Ms. Allen needs to be put on the spot for this. So, so here I am, and I know we have Dr. Renee Ramirez on, on the line and available to talk today. But I first just, you know, before we get further into this, I just want to take a brief moment. Lots of thank yous today. But Dr. Paul Beatty has been our interim county health officer for the duration of the time that I've been there. And obviously, he stepped in with, with the departure of our long-term county health officer, Dr. Dean Colletta. And those were big shoes to fill, and Dr. Beatty really stepped up and has helped us and just been genuinely just a very kind and gracious man and very, very helpful in our fight against COVID. He's truly been in this with his heart, just wanting to serve our community. That said, you know, he has, he has other pursuits, and the permanent position needs to be filled, and we need stability, and frankly, some, some vision long-term. And I believe we've found a really great one here in, in Dr. Ramirez. So not that I'm qualified to bring forward a doctor, but the RFP was out there for quite some time, and we've been fortunate to recruit Dr. Ramirez. So if, if it's the board's will, I would like to give Dr. Ramirez a few moments here to introduce himself and, and give you guys a chance to see what we see in him.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Leach.
Dr. Ramirez?
Good morning.
You are?
My on? Can you guys see me?
We, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay. Well, good morning. My name's Renee Ramirez. Grew up in Kerman, California, small town just west of Fresno. From there, I actually grew up about another fifteen, twenty minutes west of there. Grew up where my nearest neighbor was about ten away. And then went to Fresno State. From Fresno State, my wife and I moved to Philadelphia for medical school, and then we returned home, where we started raising family. We now have four kids, two boys, two, ranging from one-year-old to twelve-years-old. And we're involved in various community organizations here in Fresno. And I heard about this opportunity up in Calaveras County, which was interesting, because my family and I enjoy going up for the frog festivals and going camping in the, in the big trees up there. And I thought that this might be a, a nice next chapter for me.
Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Fulendorf?
Welcome to Calaveras County.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with a question. So you, you are currently still, still residing in Fresno County?
I'm residing in Fresno County, correct.
Excellent. How, how, how often do you come up and visit us?
Often. They need me to come up and visit. I was finally up later today. I was asked to come in to swear in.
Excellent, excellent. I would be, I look forward to meeting you then.
Sounds good.
Mr. Guerminde?
I was going to agree with you, Chair Stoppa. If you're in town and we're still in meetings, stop on and say hi.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. Any, any other comments or questions from the board? Public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or, or, um... If there's no further questions by the board, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fulendorf. Is there anything else you would like to say, Doctor, prior to us voting?
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity and enjoy, looking forward to working with you and learning a little bit more about each and every one of you.
Thank, thank you very much. We look forward to meeting you and working with you also. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes on a five-oh vote of the board. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll be back to item fourteen post a ten-minute break. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll be moving to item fourteen, Economic and Community Development. Approve the Calaveras County Parks and Recreation Commission's recommended projects to receive Proposition sixty-eight per capita grant funding.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Galino. Yes, we can.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa and Honorable Board of Supervisors and Calaveras County citizens. Kathy Galino here from the Calaveras County Economic and Community Development Department. So today before you, you have our 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission recommendations for projects regarding the Prop sixty-eight allocation funding for Calaveras County. So I'd like to give a little bit of background on this. Our Parks and Rec Commission is a seven-person body. They are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and I will give each one by name. So the representative for Supervisory District One is Alexandra James. For Supervisor District Two, it's Sarell McDaniel. For Supervisor District Three, it's Casey Jardine. For Supervisory District Four, it's Ed Nyman. And then we also have Cory Fisk, who is representing Supervisory District Five, and I believe that she is in the audience today. And then we also have representatives from the San Andreas Rec and Parks District, which is Matt Brock. And last but not least, from CCWD, we have Representative Les Thomas. So the Parks and Rec Commission is a group of people from various communities and parts of our county that provide input and advice and come up with decisions for projects, ideas, and for improving parks and recreation throughout our county. Over the course of the last few months, we have been meeting to discuss the county's allocation of Prop sixty-eight funding for parks and recreation services in our county. Now, this is an allocation that comes from the state to the county of Calaveras for public projects. During the March twenty-second, 2021 commission meeting, the commissioners voted to move forward three projects, recommend three projects to the board. The first project being the Railroad Flat Community Center. This is a project that would be managed under the Blue Mountain Community Renewal Council and would encompass the former railroad flat school that was closed. It has a gym, a youth soccer field, there's baseball fields. And the funding request on this would be to purchase the property from Calaveras Unified School District and upgrade these facilities, making them a community facility for that area in railroad. This area serves a severely disadvantaged community, which is also important to note, and the request for this was $300,000. The allocation again to the county of Calaveras Inc. is $400,000, and that's a straight allocation. The second project that the commissioners voted and wanted to recommend to the board is the San Andreas Recreation and Parks District for maintaining their, and replacing their fencing at the Alex Quinones Fields. That's right across Mountain Ranch Road from our government center, if you haven't been there. It's a forty-year-old old ballfield fence that's going around the Little League and the adult softball fields, and they were looking to replace those. Their request is a $70,000 request. And again, this is in a severely disadvantaged community. The third project is Feeny Park in Murfrees, California. The Feeny Park Foundation manages the properties that are owned by the Vallesito Union School District. And what they are looking to do with their project request is to upgrade and make the bathrooms, the public bathrooms ADA modernized. They also were hoping to have some funding to do snack shack and refurbish the skate park. This project is not located in a disadvantaged, severely disadvantaged community. Therefore, the Park Foundation would be required to have a twenty percent match. And their project request is $30,000. What else can I say? This is a recommendation. There is nothing that ties these projects permanently, or there's not a financial or sequel request at this point. What will happen is going forward, whatever the board chooses to approve and move forward or not, then I will be coming back to the board with actual very firm agreements with each of these entities. Being, number one would be the San Andreas Rex and Park Commission, or San Andreas Parks, Rex and Parks District. The railroad flat piece would be with Calaveras Unified School District. And the Feeny Park piece would be with Vallesito Union School District. And those will have very specific timelines, project requests, scopes of work, and budgets. So this is more of kind of a, an information gathering and an opportunity for our commission to provide these recommendations to the board. Are there any questions?
Any board questions? Ms. Callaway?
I, I have two. On the railroad flat one, the property is being bought by the county. We'll own it in fee title. What part of that three hundred will be for buying the facilities?
The acquisition piece for the property, I believe, was discussed at a 7-Eleven meeting, and Cory may be able to speak to this a little bit better. But what was proposed was $100,000, which would be twenty-five percent of the value of the land. So that would leave $200,000 for doing some roofing and improvements on the gym.
Okay, so just sort of, just generically, any money that is spent, whether it's for railroad, flats, San Andreas, or Feeny, the money has to be spent upfront and then reimbursed by this?
That is correct, Supervisor Callaway. And what I, the item that I will be bringing forward next board meeting will be to actually set up an allocation fund so that I can do the reimbursements quickly, as most of these entities don't have the funding to pay upfront. And it is a reimbursement that I will be seeking from the state of California parks.
Could, could you run that one by me again, if they don't have the money?
Most of these community organizations do not have the funding to pay for the work to be done. And also, the way that this particular grant works is that I will actually, not I personally, but our auditor controller would be working directly with the vendors to pay these vendors, and then I will seek reimbursement from the state of California.
So you're asking the county to front the money for these three projects, and then the reimbursement comes back to the county?
Yes, ma'am.
So the one for railroad, where the county will then be owning the land, will this, will we be eligible to be reimbursed for buying the land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So when San Andreas spends whatever for fencing, the county will pay the vendor? Do you know the timeframe for getting reimbursed?
According to the agreements, it's between thirty-five and forty-five days.
So the county will be floating the money for that amount of time, correct?
Correct.
If for some reason there are funds left out of the original allocation, will any other part, of course, you know where I'm going with this, be able to apply for these funds?
Yes, ma'am. The other thing that I want to point out is if for some reason one of these projects does not move forward, those funds too can also be reallocated to another project.
Okay.
And the timeframe on the grant for completion is June thirty, 2024. That's when all of the projects need to be completed.
Right. I'm not interested in doing, getting into locking and the like. We did Prop forty. Well, except we don't take ownership, which we did. Yes, we did.
We did, on Prop forty.
Yes, we did. CCWD. We are still in Light Pines Park.
Oh, that's right. You're correct. That's right. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, at what point can these projects proceed? Ms. Galino, I'm not clear on that.
I'm sorry. Can you please repeat that?
Yeah. At what point can these projects proceed? Do they have to wait to come back to the board?
Yes, ma'am. So what will happen is that, provided on what the recommendations the board accepts today, then I will come back with actual agreements and the master agreement between us and the state, the agreements, the sub-agreements with these three, whatever projects. I'm just saying these three, because that's what's before you today. And the detailed scope of work, their budget, and all the project information and those agreements that also have very detailed what their obligations are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway and Ms. Fulendorf.
Are we able, because that was one of my questions. Is there any more detail for each project with a cost analysis? Is it possible for the- Is it possible for the board to see these detailed for the project, for the scope of work, Kathy? Because-
Yes. What I have is very, it's not a detailed labor rate with prevailing wage. What we're floating right now is the concept. We have very rough, not rough, but we have estimates, not detailed project scopes of work. That's what will be coming back to you. We didn't want to spend a bunch of time on a bunch of different projects to not, well, there weren't a lot of projects, number one, that were brought forward, but we need to get more detailed analysis for the board to review when we move forward. This is just strictly bringing the commission's recommendations forward, and then the board can give us, give them, me as the liaison, the direction to pursue further detail.
Has there been any conversations at the Parks and Rec Commission or any other outside of that with staff on how to maximize those dollars? Because Prop 68 has various rounds for maximizing these funds to utilize as matching in the programs. So, and with Railroad Flat being in a disadvantaged area, there should be an opportunity to apply for more funding to cater to the needs that are expected. And how complete, it's one thing to purchase, and I understand that in Prop 68, we can purchase, purchase additional land, but does the project have to be fully completed with the requirements of Prop 68? I mean, has anyone dived into this to understand that all these boxes need to be checked? Because I would be concerned that if we purchased and we're expected to complete the entire project, those boxes aren't checked. So dream versus reality, are we just going for allocation of the land or the whole scope? Because if it's the whole scope, it's going to be more than that $300,000, and are we going to be able to meet that? I'm just concerned about us being able to check these boxes to get that reimbursement back.
Do you want to weigh in on that, Mr. Guerminde, or would you like Ms. Colino to go ahead and go first?
Oh, I'll let Kathy speak, but I'll fill in anything that may need to be thought.
Supervisor Fuldorff, yes, that is a very good concern. It's a very valid concern. The training that I was required to take to apply for the grant, which I haven't even applied for the grant yet. So this, as I said, is an allocation that's provided to Calaveras Incorporated, and the application has not been submitted. I haven't brought any of that to the board yet. But yes, the project completion and finding additional funding is something that the Parks and Rec Commission would also be looking at. There are many other funding sources for Parks and Recreation for maintenance and ongoing repairs. So the project checkbox is pretty prescriptive in the grant application and the reimbursement process. I was not here when Prop 40 was moved forward in the county, but I have heard that there were some difficulties. I think that now with Prop 68, it's a little more user-friendly. The checkboxes are pretty straightforward. I've been working very closely with Linda Willett, who is our State Parks Representative, because of the concerns. And obviously, the county doesn't want to be in a position to have to repay a grant back. I will also tell you that on these agreements that we will be signing, or if they do go forward, that they are a 20-year, or in some cases, a 30-year, land tenure agreement. So there is some level of safety, and there will be accountability.
Mr. Guerminde, is there anything further?
No, I think that summed it up very well. And to your point, Supervisor Fuldorff, yes, it's not enough to do everything, but it's enough to get us going and to a sustainable level where the community can fundraise and operate. And there's never enough money. We could spend endlessly, but this gets us going, and we're going to privilege progress over perfection. This will get the roof on, this will deal with the safety issues, this will acquire the land and allow the community to begin building their programs. So if there was more money, of, yeah, but I think this gets us where we need to go.
Something further, Ms. Fuldorff?
Yes, I have more questions.
But if I could, to expand upon your, what I think you're also talking about is there's a lot of money out there under Prop 68 that we should go for. And we are, as our Chair of the Commission will tell you, and Kathy, Parks and Rec seems to be nobody's specific job, so maybe it's a conversation we should have in the future about providing resources to actually bird dog this stuff.
And not to follow up on what you just said, that would be my next question to you, Kathy, is the amount of work that goes into this, because the last round was March 12th, so that round is come and gone. The next round is November, with another follow-up couple rounds in 2022 before the end date of any completion of 2024. But those rounds aren't just what is allocated, it's other money that are out there for the matching. So do you, if we don't have the resources in the county overall, I mean, should we be backtracking to figure out if there's an availability to find someone, whether that be part-time or consultant, to get us through these rounds if you, if we don't have the expertise internally? Because, I mean, it's one thing to spend the 400 that's been allocated, it's another to dedicate the time to possibly get more of that Prop 68 funding, not just for these projects, but county-wide for other needs. Because all of our parks are wanting, and Recreation are needing, they did not be, they were not able to raise money the last couple of years. So is that something that we should be even considering, or are we deadlocked in just focusing on the 400,000?
That's an excellent, excellent point. And yes, I've been focusing on the 400 because I didn't want to lose that opportunity. There is a lot of other funding out there, and yes, we do need to have some resources. I certainly can't give this all that I've got as a liaison, and, you know, in working with our Parks and Rec Commission, there are other things out there, other communities that could be served by other funding sources. So definitely, we, it would be nice to have more resources, and, I mean, I can work on backtracking that what the costs are if we were to even have even a part-time or limited-term person that could really run this, run all the funding streams down, so that we could have more funding opportunities. We could have, you know, more involvement, and yeah, definitely, I mean, there's a lot of funding out there. Unfortunately, I, my time is kind of short, or limited, or stretched, is probably a better way of putting it. And so I just focused on this particular allocation to the county with our commissioners at this point. The commissioners are very, very bright, they're aware of lots of other funding, but we just wanted to bring this forward first.
So two more, one comment and then another question. One comment is with Calaveras County, we are a destination of Recreation. It is an economic driver. So investing in the Parks and Recs, I think, should be a consideration of how we advertise, how we're advertising for tourism. I mean, Murfrees Park, I mean, it made Forbes, one of the top destinations in Calaveras County. So these areas, people are looking, they're changing the way they travel, and so that should be also a consideration of how we're investing. What is going to be the biggest driver for economic tourism? And is it always just a pathway for other aspects of the county that we should be railroad flat? I mean, these are things we should be focusing, not just for enjoyment of the community, but could they be potential destinations? And then, and that's just a comment, Kathy, you don't have to answer. And then the one thing I do have a question about is, is there a, I'm new, so to anyone, is there an overall, like a master plan or a master list of all the Parks and Recs that the county oversees in this? And most likely, there's probably not, which is fine. I just was going to ask so I could understand why the decision was on outside of Railroad Flat, the other ones.
So my understanding, Supervisor Fuldorff, is that there is an implementation measure that has been recommended in our general plan. It was something that would be put together by the Administrative Office, Planning and Public Works, but we have not begun that process yet. I invite Planning Director Peter Mallor to jump in here. I see a hand. Mr. Mallor?
Yes, thank you, Peter Mallor, Planning Director. You know, this is one, there's policies in the general plan about, you know, ensuring that the, that there's funding for parks, it's an important aspect of the community. Where the, as Krista mentioned, there's an implementation measure that directs the county to prepare a master plan. We obviously have a list of where all the parks are, but that doesn't really, you know, move us forward into how do we make sure that these parks are maintained and developed properly. We have a variety of different entities that manage the parks, from the Veterans Districts to specific Parks and Rec Districts to nonprofit organizations. And so it really is, it's important that we do move forward on this in the future. Unfortunately, it's not on the top of the priority list just yet, but it's something that probably needs to be, to be moved up, and, you know, the next time we look at the general plan.
Thank you, Ms. Mallor.
Thank you all. Good set of questions there, Ms. Fuldorff and the rest of the supervisors, and good from, good answers from staff. I want to follow up on that, because, you know, with Prop 68, there are more funds coming down the pike, and there are multiple other areas throughout the county that aren't being addressed here now. You know, District 5, first of all, finding a spot for a park is the first, is the first issue. But, you know, we are underserved in our area for parks, and, you know, is a concern of mine. Also, you know, accepting that we don't have areas, there's the Greater Valley Springs area, which falls into Mr. Toffenelli's District 1, and there's prospective areas in there. And I think in the future, considerations for that would be greatly, would greatly serve three more of our lakes in our, in our county, along with a vast amount of our population. And in the future, I definitely think that, you know, more often than not, it's the last thought when we're investing into our tourism, but it's, you know, the least invested into with, you know, a lot of prospective great destination points for the future in our county. You know, I think Ms. Fisk could agree, and I'm glad she's here, representing District 5, and I appreciate all the good work going into the other areas, you know. It's not lost on me that, you know, with Railroad Flat and all, it's a greatly underserved community, and I greatly support a lot of people there. You know, I grew up with a vast majority of them. With that, I have a question. Has CUSD already put together a committee to be able to release that property, because they have to go through a process? And Ms. Fisk, can you address any of that, or should I have Ms. Colino do it? And I want to give you every opportunity to say what you have to say while you're here. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
You can take your mask off when you talk.
If you want.
If you'd like.
Thank you, because glasses are important, and it's difficult when I can't see through the fog. Thank you for having me here. First, before I start, I just would really like to thank the volunteers who are part of the commission. These are individuals who are giving of their time, that are very educated in these areas, and we have the benefit of having some that are intimately related to the understanding of how to develop grants and how to be able to work some of this money around so that it best benefits Calaveras, the Calaveras communities. With that said, the projects that have been presented were kind of already in progress when our group got together, and so there was an understanding and urgency in being able to provide these forward so that we could get started on something. But concurrently, what we would like to be able to do is start really raising the understanding of the importance of the Parks and Rec Commission, so that we can address the things that are important to Calaveras, like the fact that we are a tourist area, and that this is what is going to be able to draw money into our community. The one point that I do want to bring up on that is that when those tourists come here and we provide them the experience that they get to enjoy, they leave and often do so with their garbage and things that remain. And so it has really increased the cost and the work effort for people to go back behind and keep some of these areas in condition. And so maintenance is going to be a very important part of any of the, anything that we choose to move forward on, so that we can keep everything at the same level of quality that we expect for our community and for those who are going to visit us. For the Calaveras Unified School District, I am also sitting on a committee that's called the 7-11 Committee, where the school district periodically, through times, look at their extra properties that they have available. And with the closing of the railroad school, that this was an option that had come up for them in order to be able to relieve their responsibility for maintenance of the property. This school has been in process of going through the closing for a couple of years, and in that timeframe, again, anytime you leave a building vacant, you are exposing it to a much faster deterioration than if it's being used and occupied. And so in that time, there's been residents that have taken advantage of the opportunity of keeping the place functionable in order to be able to serve the people in that community. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the school district, but as a member of that committee, in our last meeting, we did go ahead and review the appraisal amount that was provided for the property. We agreed that the appraisal was not done under the proper scope of work that the school district had provided, and so they got some comps in order to be able to justify the understanding of what that property is worth in its current condition. And so in its current condition, there are a lot of things on that property that are going to require maintenance and money in order to be able to move it forward. However, with the money with this grant, there are very specific areas that can take advantage of it right away, and then income will start coming back into that location along with the volunteering efforts of that community, that will be able to continue building out and taking care of the rest of the issues. So with that said, it's my understanding that the CUSD was going to be taking to their board of supervisors the release of that property, and that we would be in discussions with them on the purchase.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk. Some good points there. With this initial investment, you know, we have to be cognizant of the maintenance of the property for the future, recurring costs, you know, hopefully will be mitigated by some nonprofits and volunteers within the communities. But with that, we still hold the responsibility for that if things, you know, another COVID happens and they're not able to fund, raise funds throughout that time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, I got a couple of questions for you. The county will be the administrator of the grant itself, is that correct?
That is correct.
So just a couple of concerns on being reimbursed, that we have somebody that's going to oversee to make sure the funding that's allocated to these three projects is spent correctly, and that the county will be fully reimbursed for all of that money?
That is correct. That would be my role as these projects come through and as the reimbursements occur.
And then the other question I have is, this Prop 68, is there any, is there any administrative costs allowed for these funds?
There is. It would require me to really track my time and develop a time sheet- It would require me to really track my time and develop a time sheet that is some reimbursable. Not a lot, but a little.
Well, I was thinking more of looking at the November funding round and possibly going into 2022 funding round. A Prop 68 that Amanda, Supervisor Folendorf, had brought up, and if we have preliminary budget coming, if we can get this at least itemized on that budget for discussions, that we can maybe bring somebody on board to write the grants and get reimbursed through administrative costs through the grant itself. Just a thought in order to get forward, move forward and get funding in all of these rounds. Obviously, May is too late, but I'm thinking of what we can do moving forward, especially for a property that it looks like we're going to be purchasing. I'd hate to just go so far on it and then something happens and what if another COVID or something happens and we're in the middle of something. If we can get more funding for that, and there are other districts and other park and rec districts around the county that certainly because of COVID has lost their income on their properties, not being able to run it out or what have you, that it certainly needs money. And that's, we have one option that we had spoke about, coming forward a preliminary budget to help rectify some of that, but if we can go forward with something that we're going to get reimbursed through these grants and put somebody in place that can do the grant writing and do the administration of the grants itself would certainly help, I think, going forward.
Absolutely. I completely agree 100%. I think that if we had somebody that could really write these grants, we could get a lot of funding sent to Calveras.
I could be in support of that. I work with Kathy on, I mean, this is the economic development generator right here. Work with her on CS EDD. There's multiple things going on at the same time. She has a lot on her plate as one person. She extends herself as far as she can, and at times, she's, you know, she's cognizant of that, and she's messaged me in the middle of meetings with other institutions, like, please don't throw this on my plate because I don't have enough time. So, you know, we need to provide more time for Kathy, and the help that Ms. Folendorf and Mr. Toffenelli are talking about is definitely something that we should look at as we move forward. Ms. Fisk, did you have something you want to add to that?
Just to talk to Mr. Toffenelli's point, and that is that for most other counties, this is a full-time director position, and we do have volunteers that have very good experience that are on this committee, that are offering either for grant writing or construction management or facility development. And so in that sense, we understand the requirements that the grant has in making sure that each of these projects has a master plan that makes sure that we're not getting too far or too deep into something before realizing that we don't have enough money to be able to finish it. There's also other grants besides the Proposition 68 that we can look at, but in this committee or this commission, everything has been basically reactive, and we haven't been given really the opportunity to expand our knowledge on what this commission really can provide the county. And so in looking at what other commissions do or other counties do, they have even training programs, they have different recreational opportunities for building funding in that department so that it can help take care of itself and help take care of the salary of a full-time person that is in that. And so these are some of the goals and discussions that we're going to be having within the commission once we're able to start the development of our team and how that looks. So we've only had three meetings, really, that have been functionable meetings that have had the amount of people there necessary for us to perform any of our duties. And so I really feel that if we're given the opportunity to be able to even find some of this own funding ourselves, that we will do whatever it takes to make it happen because this particular area has not seen the amount of dedication that it really is necessary for the Calveras County and the whole purpose of our economic development drivers here, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Fisk. Mr. Garamendi?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their thoughtful comments on this whole thing, and I agree with Gary and Amanda. We need to think about Parks and Rec as an economic development tool and get the resources to put fuel in the tank to expand this. Think about regional parks, I mean, when our kids, fortunately, I'm beyond that, but when they go down to a soccer tournament, there'd be 500 families there, and they're staying the night, they're eating at the restaurants. That's good. It's good for bringing families, more families up to our community, which we need, especially those kids of our schools. But I think if we look at this as an economic development tool, I think about the work that Colonel McRevy did a decade ago when you guys were working on Prop 40, and, you know, he tracked all the trails through the national forests, all the way from, you know, Camp Connel over to Railroad Flat. Those are things that, you know, we could figure out how we could use, and they don't cost us much. And then pursuing regional park ideas, I've always thought, I think you've dragged me to half a dozen fundraisers for that over the years, Ben, so obviously, it's out there. We just need to figure out how to close this deal and get it done. Seems like it's been on everybody's to-do list for a very long time.
Yeah. Agreed, Mr. Garamendi. You know, there's a lot of prospective, positive community members working towards a lot of different ends, you know. We can't get them all done at once, but we need to look at the entire plan and possibly, you know, a master plan was brought up by Ms. Folendorf earlier.
And we could probably find Pat's old work on that. Just before I sign off, I want to thank Cory, who's a construction expert and has offered to come up and pro bono, give us some advice on how we can eat that elephant of Railroad Flat Elementary.
Buy at a time.
How we, exactly, how we take that money and make it as effective as possible. And what an awesome volunteer. Thank you, Cory.
Excellent. If there's no further, Ms. Folendorf?
I have one more question. I think it's for Kathy. On number three for Feeny Park, it shows that this is the only one that has grant fund matching at 20%. Will that matching, where's that matching coming from?
The match will come from the Feeny Park Foundation, and it's $6,000.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisk, do you want to add something to that?
Yes, just also, matching doesn't always have to come in a fiscal monetary way, and so sometimes volunteers and the amount of time that they put towards something will also have value that will offer part of that match.
Yeah, we're using that.
That is correct. They can use an in-kind component, but it's very, very prescriptive. So if this project is approved, I will work with the Feeny Park Foundation to ensure that they cross their Ts and dot their Is because the state really, really looks at that stuff very closely.
You can charge three hours of my time I was cleaning Feeny Park two weeks ago.
That's not dotting Is, Ms. Callaway.
Just want to make sure my time was counted.
It's always counted.
Kathy, these are some of the things that I guess for, to understand this, those are, that information I, in the future, would like to understand more. I mean, if it's not going to be monetary and it's going to be time or other contributions, I think that should be broken down so it understands that it's not coming out of a budget line item and what those nonprofits or community members are contributing. For me, it just helps me understand so I know, it answers my question, where that money, what does that money really look like, and is it coming from the county expectation or is it coming from the community through fundraisers, time, consultants, whatever have you?
Absolutely. I totally understand what you're saying, and that is the detail that I will hope to be bringing forward, the level of detail that you would like if these projects are approved to go forward.
I think that will be refined as we move forward also. You know, this is the first initial step, saying this is the direction the board would like to go. At that point, you have your marching orders and you'll be refining it from there. Ms. Colino?
Yes, sir.
All right. So if there's no further board questions, I will move on to public comment.
Yes, we have Susan Linus.
Susan.
Good morning, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Linus, and I am the treasurer of the Feeny Park Foundation and the previous president of the Feeny Park Foundation. First of all, I'd like to thank Kathy for the work she's put into this recommendation and the Park Recreation Committee. The foundation will definitely make use of this $30,000. In 2019, when these funds became available, Feeny Park also applied for this money, but because we are nonprofit, we weren't, we're not a park and recs, we weren't eligible for the funds. So I did spend quite a lot of time looking into this grant and the parameters of what could be done. Feeny Park, as you know, is in Murphy's, but it serves a much greater area. It's used by residents up and down the Highway 4 corridor for Little League Soccer, Disc Golf, and it includes the only developed skateboard park in the county. The next closest one is in Oakdale. It is currently entirely community funded. We receive no public funds. Our major fundraisers, which are Mr. Fox's Wild Ride and the Gold Rush Street Fair, were both canceled last year. On both of those events, bringing people into our community, we have cyclists from as far as Utah coming to Mr. Fox's Wild Ride. While the park can definitely use this $300,000 that was recommended, which will go to upgrade the one of our public restrooms in the park, there are much greater needs. There are several years of deferred maintenance on everything from the handicapped accessible pathways to upgrading the restrooms with water and power to be more efficient so they can be open year-round for our community. Feeny Park has applied for $100,000 to this program to be used to fund these things, but we were awarded the $30,000, and we will use that. The specific grant program has already awarded $177,000 to each of the following park districts. The San Andreas Parks District received its own allocation of $177,000. The McCollum Hill Veterans District was awarded $177,000, and the City of Angels was awarded $177,000. This is separate from the $400,000 that was awarded to the county. The remaining $400,000 was intended to be distributed throughout the county to serve the other parks and needs of the community. Unfortunately, there was, very many of the parks districts were unaware of the Park and Recreation Committee's meetings and didn't have an opportunity to make presentations. I know of this because I've worked with Kathy in conversations prior to the meeting. As I said, we'd also applied for this funding. White Pines Park and Valley Springs and as well as other parks and nonprofits were unaware of the meeting and hadn't an opportunity to provide proposals. While the proposal to the Railroad Flat is laudable, there are a lot of grants that are available for park acquisition. This grant is unique and allows it to be used for repairs and maintenance, which is a very rare grant. Most grants require you to purchase new land.
Susan?
I'm sorry.
If you could sum it up or pass this.
Okay, quickly. So what I'm saying is I want to let say that I'm asking that the money be allocated more accurately to reflect the park and recreation needs of the whole community, but I'm very happy that Feeny Park is being allocated this money, and I assure you, we are shovel-ready. We have the resources and the funds to do our share of the allocation, and you gave us this money and we will be digging in tomorrow for it. I know there may be other questions, and I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your time, Susan. Any further public comment?
We have Sarah Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wilson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the Board of Supervisors and also to the committee for all of your hard work. I'm a board member for the Vallesito Union School District. I've served four years on that board. My most recent was board president for the past two years. I'm also a fifth-generation resident of Calveras County, having been raised in the Vallesito Union School District, going to Michelson then Avery and graduating Bret Hart High School. Also, my husband and I, we have two boys. They attend school at the Michelson Elementary School currently. I would like to take a few moments to say how much the community needs and appreciates Feeny Park. I remember as a child when it was built and how wonderful it was to actually have a facility close to home, and we didn't have to drive many hours to different facilities. Now, as a mom, I see how beneficial the park is for all of our kids. It is the only facility to accommodate soccer sports and a skate park for kids from Copper to Arnold. All of the schools use the park for various events. Most recently, the Michelson Elementary School is holding their 32nd Annual Chicken in a Barrel fundraiser at Feeny Park this June. Historically, the fundraiser the past 30 years has been at the Murphy's Park, but they're moving it this year to Feeny Park. Also, right before COVID, all of the local elementary schools had a color-run fundraiser to raise money for the school program. They partnered together, which was unique and wonderful, to see the schools that are typically doing their fundraisers separate come together at Feeny Park to raise money for all of the kids in the community. In addition, with COVID, school fundraisers have been placed on hold. However, the teachers have been creative and they've done field trips through Feeny Park recently. The kindergarteners are actually going to be going on a walk around Feeny Park, enjoying the different plants and trees that the park has to offer. Not a day goes by that I do not see people enjoying Feeny Park, from dog walkers to disc golf enthusiasts to moms taking their kids for walks. The park is truly enjoyed by all age groups. Being raised in Murphy's and now living here as an adult, I have seen how much Murphy's has changed. I've seen the vacant lots turn into tasting rooms, and I've seen Murphy's develop and change over the years. But what you don't see is how hard the nonprofit organizations work and are struggling and have been struggling for years, and now with COVID and shutting down their fundraisers are struggling even more. What I'm asking is that the Board of Supervisors support the grant funding for Feeny Park Foundation and support it fairly across the board. The foundation has suffered tremendously this past year and is in desperate need of funding to keep the park open for all ages and all groups and everyone in the community. Thank you for your time.
Excellently timed, Ms. Wilson. Three minutes on the dot. Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yes, we have Salvador Sanchez Fernandez.
Cory, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Cory, my name is Salvador Sanchez. I am a BNCRC member. I've been for the past three years, basically for the people, you know, for the Railroad Flat. It warms my heart, you know, hearing all these other people, you know, talk about their parks, and I'm so excited that we're finally going to have a park, you know, basically up here, up in Railroad Flat, Voltyville, Franco, West Point area, you know, because we really don't have one, you know? And this is going to be basically the park that's going to take care of these big communities, you know? I moved from, I originally lived in San Jose, and we moved over here, you know, six years ago, and I love Calveras County. This is the place, you know, to be. I mean, my kids, you know, love it here. My kids, you know, enjoy it here. They play baseball, they do karate, we have soccer. Before coming over here, we didn't even have a soccer team up in the, you know, Railroad Flat, Franco, West Point area, or we had a small one in West Point, but we were able to create it, you know? And then now with this opportunity, you know, to start a park, you know, up here, it's going to be so amazing, especially the way that you guys, the other people are talking about the parks, you know? Up here, really, really a small community, you know, but we're really, you know, proud community, and we are so happy that you guys are thinking about us and, you know, and about to help us, you know, go into this new adventure, you know? And thank you so much to the board, and thank you so much to Mr. Garamendi, you know, who is our supervisor on this side, and thank you guys for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Salvador. Any further public comment?
Yes, Ed Neiman.
Ed?
Mr. Neiman, can you hear us?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning to the Board members. Thanks for all your work you do and for giving me the opportunity to work with you. I am the District 4 Commissioner on the Parks and Recreation and I have to apologize that I'm real naive, two meetings into this, you know, Prop 68 thing and my lack of understanding of it. And I'm gaining more understanding all the time. This has been very beneficial, listening to some of the things that was brought up here. First of all, I'd like to address the Railroad Flat project. Commissioner Thomas and I actually took a trip up there and walked that property. And it is an asset that this county has that it should move on as quickly as possible because, as it was mentioned earlier, empty buildings that aren't used deteriorate rapidly. And no matter, it's going to take a lot more than $300,000 or $400,000 to make that work. But we need to, as a county and as a Board of Supervisors and Parks and Recreation Commission, need to do everything we can to make sure that happens. With that being said, a couple of questions that has come up to me during this meeting and I'd like to address a question to Commissioner Falendorf or Cory or Kathy, whichever one or all of you that want to kind of chime in on this. And I can understand that 68 funds can be used to fund an effort to get more funds, that we could hire somebody and create a path so that we could pull in not just $300,000 for Railroad Flats, but maybe $800,000 and start working for some other parks and some other recreation opportunities. That's kind of been dropped on me in the last three days. I may be wrong about that, but I would like to have, if that's possible, I think it's something that we need to address and to think about. I was going to bring this forward. We were supposed to have a Parks and Recreation meeting on Monday before this meeting, but it got changed to tomorrow, I believe. So that's my question for Commissioner Falendorf, Cory and Kathy, if I could let you have some time.
Kathy, do you want to answer that or do you want me to clarify my question and comment from earlier?
Answer. And it's also something that is going to be on our agenda. We do have our monthly Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. For those that may be listening that want to be a part of that, it's noticed on the county website calendar as well as posted outside the board chambers. And if anybody has questions or needs assistance, they can always call me directly at 209-754-6742. But yes, we are going to be looking at other funding to potentially get somebody on board to help the Parks and Rec Commission. As I said, I'm a liaison, so I'm just a conduit for the commission to the Board of Supervisors. But in working together, I think all seven of our commissioners are interested in having something that's sustainable and something where we will be acquiring more grants and working together and possibly through, like I said, a temporary person, a part-time person, to get more and more funding to continue maintenance and growth of our parks and recreation.
Any further comments?
There is no other public comments at this time.
Thank you. It's really good to hear so many people speak out on this issue. It really hits the heart of every home, I believe, in Calaveras County. You know, even going up to Railroad Flat, I was in 7th grade when I was traveling up there to practice soccer on the field. So there was no grass on the field for the most part. And I think I had scabbed-up knees that entire soccer season. And, you know, Don Stumpf at that time was our soccer coach. And we were, when he was from that neck of the woods. And, you know, I believe we ran a perfect record that year because, I mean, we were trained tough, you know. So hopefully we can get some grass on the field. Any further Board comments? Mr. Gary Mindy?
I'd like to make a motion. Can I make a motion?
You can. You're so moved. So moved.
I will gladly second this motion.
Thank you, sir. Any further Board comments to this before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Kathy. We got pretty clear direction.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. And we're not going to let you down. We're going to move this forward.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Fisk. Excellent to see someone out there participating. All right, so. Back up to 17 now. Health and Human Services Agency authorized the Board Chair to sign a letter of intent with Health Plan of San Joaquin, changing the county's managed healthcare model from the regional model to the two-plan model.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and citizens of Calaveras County. On the agenda today is for the Board's consideration to sign a letter of intent to change the county's Medicare model from the regional model to a two-plan model.
Are we going to have to have her call in? We, you know, the same microphone issue that possibly Mr. Leach was dealing with earlier. You know, you could possibly mute your screen and then call in on your phone at the same time. That may resolve it. If we're okay with that, Madam Clerk, will that resolve it? And then we could also have her be able to share through her screen at the same time. If it works. I've had a juggle a couple of meetings that way in the past.
No, Laura, sorry, we're still not hearing you well.
Can we take a five-minute break while we get this ironed out so we can proceed smoothly? Is that okay? Sorry. Thank you. Welcome back. Can we hear you now?
I can hear you fine.
I can hear you fine. Thank you very much.
No echoes or anything?
No.
Great.
Oh, there's something in the background. You might want to mute your computer.
It's muted.
Okay.
I'm actually going to just disconnect from the computer and use my phone.
Is that going to work for sharing?
What?
Let's proceed.
Are you there?
Yes. Let's proceed and...
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you all. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I think in the future for me, I will stop by and chat in person when doing presentations with you all. But again, I would like to say good morning and most good afternoon to the Board of Supervisors and to the citizens of Calaveras County. As I was sharing earlier, for consideration today on the agenda is for the Board of Supervisors to consider signing a letter of intent, essentially changing the county's Medicare plan from the regional model to a two-plan model. In changing to a two-plan model, the county Medicare plan would include a public, would include a public healthcare plan and a commercial healthcare plan. The public healthcare plan would be the Health Plan of San Joaquin. The commercial healthcare plan would not be known until 2024, after the state completes its RFP process and awards the contract. Essentially, the same contract could be awarded to our current provider, which is Anthem or Centene. It all depends on what the state decides. The Health Plan of San Joaquin has been serving San Joaquin County and Santa Fe County for the past 25 years. And today, they serve over 366,000 members. Health Plan of San Joaquin, as with all Medicare plans, are held to the same rigorous standards required to provide healthcare as identified with their legislation and regulations. San Joaquin and Santa Fe County offers its Medicare members two healthcare plan places. They offer Centene and they offer the Health Plan of San Joaquin. Nine out of 10 members choose Health Plan of San Joaquin over Centene. In moving to the two-plan model and working with neighboring counties on a shared vision to govern the Health Plan of San Joaquin, Calaveras County could have a seat at the plan commission, giving the county local control and a voice in addressing the unique needs of our 12,000 Medicare members. Signing a letter of intent today and changing the two-plan model is an opportunity for the county to exert local control and oversight over its Medicare managed care model by providing our Medicare beneficiaries with the additional options to enroll in a public healthcare plan and a commercial healthcare plan. Not that it makes a difference to the decisions that the Board makes today, but I would like to share that Aljara County and Alpine County have signed a letter of intent to partner with the Health Plan of San Joaquin. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is the third time we're discussing this. Mr. Gary Mindy had a vast amount of questions prior. Have you been able to address all those along with Ms. Coway? You also had a vast amount of good questions also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spent an extraordinary amount of time running the stuff to ground, talking to our different agencies and whatnot. So I have no questions. I'll have a comment when we move to that.
Absolutely, sir. Ms. Coway?
Ms. Larson, I again thank you for responding to my many questions. Just to expand a little bit more, under the regional plan, how many choices do our Medicare recipients get to make or have to make?
Yes, ma'am. Under our current plan, they have two commercial healthcare plan options. So it's the same except for their commercial healthcare plan. Moving, changing our healthcare plan to the two-plan model would give us a public model and a commercial model. And the commercial, or excuse me, the public model would be the local initiative with the Health Plan of San Joaquin.
I think that's where I understand commercial and our current provider. Do we just have one or do we have two?
We have two.
Okay.
We have two. We have Anthem. We have Anthem and we have Centene. The difference being, and I understand it's confusing. It took me a little bit of time to figure this out myself. The difference being is that the Health Plan of San Joaquin is a local health plan. And so it is ran, governed by San Joaquin County and the commission. And so we have more local control over the plan as opposed to the commercial plans, whether governed by their executive boards and their executive management. So the Health Plan of San Joaquin does give us more of a local control over the health plan that serves our community. So it gives our citizens choices, a local healthcare plan or a commercial plan.
What kind of local control do we want that we're not getting now?
Great question. So one of the things that I, if I may review my memo. One of the most, I think, critical aspects is that we, the Health Plan of San Joaquin is governed by our commission. And so if Calaveras County chooses, we can have a seat at that commission. And should we have needs of our community that we want addressed within the Health Plan of San Joaquin, we can share that with the commission and then they would address it accordingly. So meeting the needs of our community is on a smaller scale and we would have a voice in addressing those needs. I think community investment. Health Plan of San Joaquin offers scholarships for local high school graduates to attend universities, those regular oversights, as with all Medicare plans.
I guess my question then would be, our local providers, the two that we have, are not meeting the needs per at least Health and Human Service perspective. They're not meeting the needs that we have requested. I mean, one of the things was that, well, we have to travel so far for specialized services. Yeah, you do, or we do, because we're not going to have all of the disciplines out of Mark Twain or at Venice Hospital or Sutter. So we have to go to the more urban areas. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is just having a seat at the table, that's more, that could be just more bureaucracy because now we're government versus, I can't believe I'm saying this. The libertarian in me might be coming out. The commercial should also be attuned to what it is we need for our community. So I guess it's like San Joaquin dealing with the more urban areas. I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure I comprehend what the advantage is.
Right. So if I can just comment on that, and I think that's a really great question. And the challenge right now is not with our providers, it's with the healthcare plan. And so within each healthcare plan, the plan sets forth, these are the providers that you can go and see to seek your medical care. So the plan actually dictates that. If you think about your own healthcare that you have, within the scope of your healthcare plan, your plan tells you you can go see these providers, but you can't go see these providers. So the challenge right now that has been with the regional models, which is Anthem and Centene, and in accordance with the audit that was conducted by the State of California, is that the providers, the healthcare plans, have not been providing enough providers to meet the needs of the beneficiaries within the compliance of the law. For example, some folks were traveling 150 miles to go see a specialist like a gynecologist. The law states that beneficiaries are not supposed to be traveling more than 60 miles. And so the challenge with that is that the two healthcare plans today, they were aware of that and that wasn't addressed. And on two separate occasions, the Department of Healthcare actually gave the regional plan waivers to exempt them from the requirements of the law that says that travel can only be within 60 miles. And so it's just been a challenge. It's not the providers. The providers are serving the people in accordance with what oversight governs them. It is the healthcare plan that says these are the providers that you can go and see. Right now, San Joaquin County is serving Santa Fe County. They will be serving Aljara County and they will be serving Alpine County. Their intent is to contrast with all of the current providers that are currently serving our Medicare beneficiaries because within the scope of the law, it also says that we want to make sure that we maintain consistency in care. So just because we might change our healthcare plan doesn't mean that our beneficiaries would have to change their providers. So San Joaquin County would move forward in contracting with all the current providers, but also looking at additional providers to expand the network. The network by nature is going to expand, giving all the... Their network by nature is going to expand, giving our beneficiaries more options in Caldas County because they are going to be working in Alpine County and they are going to be working in Aljara County. I'd also like to mention that they currently have contracts in San Joaquin County and in Santa Fe County with all of our current hospitals. They have with Ventus, with Sutter, and so that is not going to be a challenge as well. So our current providers that are currently serving our citizens will maintain, will stay, but the network of choices will be expanded. So to answer your question, I think you might be alluding to why? Why make the change? I think we should make the change because if we don't, in 2024, the state will pick our providers, and we will have no say in who those providers are. Our only option in 2024 will be the state says, here are your two commercial plans, or if there's more, it depends if they qualify, and we get to pick from that list that the state gives us. By signing the letter of intent, we are essentially picking one of our plan options, and then we would have to wait until 2024 for the second plan option.
Oh, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I find some of it unrealistic. I live in Sky High, and it takes me 50 miles just to get to San Andreas. And so if I need a specialist, I'm going to have to still drive another 40 miles. So sort of that part. Will, under the San Joa, health care plan of San Joaquin, can everybody go to whomever they choose to go to, or do they have to be approved by the plan?
So it's a medical health care plan, and so within that plan, they would have to go see the providers that are set forth by the plan. If the plan dictates that you have to have, if you're talking about a referral for a specialist, that's something that would, it depends on the type of plan, I would say. But yes, you do within the confines of your plan, like you have to go see the providers that your health care plan is, says it is within the network.
So it's still, thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you for bringing up the 50-mile rule, Ms. Coway. I mean, it's another example of the state saying a precedent of one size fits all that does not take into account what a rural area has to deal with. Any further board comments, questions, Mr. Toffenelli?
Hi, Ms. Larson. How are you? It's almost lunch, you're right, it's almost afternoon, but still AM. My question is, if we vote to join the health care plan of San Joaquin, do we have the ability to opt out if it's not working for us?
So we have, so, so yes, I have reached out to the state to ask that question. We have until September, when the county ordinance would need to be done, essentially stating formally that the county is changing its health, its Med-Cal model from a regional model to a two-plan model. But I, but if somewhere within now and September, or excuse me, October, something happened and the county was adamant that they are no longer interested in doing this, the state has indicated that, that yes, you could, you could rescind that. And what would happen if we do that? Well, essentially, we would fall back into the regional county model, and then when the state finishes their RFP process, then they would select, we would select two commercial plans.
And after September, until 2024, we are in and have no ability to opt out because we've agreed to that model?
And October, once we change the, correct. And the reason why is, is that the state wants a, they want assurance of what the county's decision is as to what health care plan model they are putting forth for its Med-Cal members so that they know exactly how many commercial plans they need to procure contracts with. However, I will say, I will share this, that going into October, the state is already going to be starting the rigorous vetting process for the health plan of San Joaquin and any other public model plans that are expanding. And they will go through the same rigorous vetting process that the commercial plans do, and that is going to take some time. So by October, the state will have some level of assurance, the qualifications of all of the health care plans that are going to be assessed. But it will take them through past October to know if they're truly going to pass. So if for some reason, next year, the year following, that through the vetting process by the state, if they determine that the health plan of San Joaquin County cannot support this expansion, then the state does have the option to forego the letter of intent, and then it would put it back into the regional model that we currently are in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
To follow up on what Mr. Toffenelli just questioned, you know, we do a letter of intent. I mean, this is non-binding at the same time, it's basically giving our word. So in my, in my mind, once I give my word, it's binding. But we go through, so October of 2021 is when it's officially binding. You know, the state's asking for in 2024, you know, for us to have this put forward and be meeting the state requirements, which, you know, as I see it, there's no way even with the dual plan, we can fully mitigate the mileage issue. But is San Joaquin asking for a two-year contract, or are they asking for a longer contract?
No, so that's, those are really good questions, and so I'd like to address them separately. So the contract, if we change our Med-Cal model, we can only do that when the state opens it up to counties to allow for that. The opportunity to change a county's Med-Cal model hasn't, the last time I think that happened was 2012. And so I don't know, and the state representative did not know either, when this opportunity will come around again for us to change our Med-Cal model if we wanted to. But if that opportunity does come back around, then we would go through the same process and change our Med-Cal model. With respect to the travel, it is not the county's responsibility to mitigate the travel requirement. It is the health care, the health care plan's responsibility to be looking at where do our members live and seeking out providers that can support the members in their area. And you're right, the uniqueness about Caldas County is that we do, living way up in, you know, up towards the Alpine border, like there's going to be some travel. But with health plan of San Joaquin expanding into Alpine, that might give us more options for providers up in that area, expanding over to Aljara County, that would give us more options that way. They're looking at contracting with current providers that our members are using. So if we have providers in Tulare or in Amity, then we, then health plan of San Joaquin County would be looking at expanding their network of providers to mitigate some of the travel dilemmas. So the burden for Caldas County is not for us to mitigate the travel, it is on the health plan of San Joaquin to vigorously and actively seek out providers that have a fewer distance for travel so that they can address the travel and make sure that they can stay within the compliance of the law. But obviously, given our locations, there's going to be exceptions to that. But I think in general, when we think about the audit findings, the travel that was happening for some counties, you know, 150 miles, that, it was happening more than just a few times. And so there is a reason why the audit found that as a finding. It wasn't just a few people, it was, it was a lot of people. But that is something that San Joaquin County is aware of. They know that they are expanding their network to support rural counties. I mean, they're, they're serving Alpine County now, so this is a big lift for them, but they absolutely are aware of what is expected of them and how to serve our members.
Yeah, and I understand your point on Alpine County, but they more often than not travel to Salt Lake Tahoe on all their issues.
Correct.
So, I mean, that, creating a larger distance, but, you know, not to be argumentative. How's the VA fill into this? And thank you, Amanda, for the question. How's the VA fill into this, veterans?
Oh, how, well, if they're Med-Cal members, it would, they would, they're, I'm not understanding the question. If they are Med-Cal members, then their health care coverage would, it would be the same as what they're currently receiving.
Yeah, but they also get additional, some of their specialists aren't locally, and so they're having to go down to Palo Alto and other areas, and that's been a big issue too, is just serving the VA, the VAs as well. So how is this, the state model going to incorporate rural health care for the VAs, especially when our numbers are one of the highest in the area? How does that hook into this? And I understand the VA is a separate, but we've got to also acknowledge that's going to be the highest population that's going to be possibly using some of these services.
Yeah, that's a really good question. And so if I, so our members, our community members who are veterans, who are receiving veteran services, their services are being provided through the VA. So they're going to providers who are contracted with the veterans. So if they are also a Med-Cal member, then they are going to be able to still seek sources from their current providers that they're receiving because the health plan of San Joaquin will be contracting with all current providers. So they, the veterans' health care is separate from the Med-Cal health care that we're talking about because the, the burden is on the veterans to provide local providers to serve veterans in rural areas. So that is, that is separate from, I think, what we're talking about. That, that is the department of the veterans who would, and those contracts are not changing. So veterans would still have their same benefits with their doctors who are contracted with the VA. But also to mention, in San Joaquin County, there is a very large veteran hospital and clinic, and I'm sure our veteran members are aware of that and potentially are utilizing that currently.
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Toffenelli?
Yes, I do have a question, which kind of dovetails into what Amanda was saying. If we choose to go down this model, and the current model that we have has a list of providers, and if I have a doctor that I've been going to for the last five years and feel comfortable going to, there's no guarantee if we change models here that that doctor's going to be available come when this goes into place, that I would have to be going to a different doctor because that particular one is not in this model. Is that correct?
Um, yes and no. So after, so right now, what, after if we sign the letter of intent, the health plan of San Joaquin has a list of all the current Med-Cal providers that are serving all of our community members. And so once we move forward with the letter of intent, they will move forward with reaching out to all of the current providers to begin the contract process. I will also share with you that in talking with health plan of San Joaquin, they have shared that Caldas County providers have already started reaching out to them to ask about the contract process. So there is, there is no reason to believe that the current Med-Cal providers serving our members would not contract with health plan of San Joaquin because they too are serving Med-Cal beneficiaries. So within, the health plan of San Joaquin, it's a different plan, but they are still operating under the same regulations and legislation that our current health plan members do, Anthem and Centene. They are all operating within, under the same, within guidelines.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing, this is Sam, do you mind if I jump in real quick?
Sure.
I just want to make sure, I think you're all aware, our board members, but just so that, you know, everyone that's listening hears this, that this isn't necessarily a choice entirely of are we changing or are we not changing from what exists now. The status quo is changing either way because frankly, the state is going to, you know, go to the RFP process. So what exists today will look different in 2024 whether we take action or not. The question is whether you want to move to this plan and try to do the health plan of San Joaquin, which, which Laura is advising, or do you want to, you know, move to the new plan under the new state RFP that will be developed moving forward? So I think you're all aware of that, but I just want to make sure because, you know, a lot of questions about, well, what exists today and will that still stay the same? And there's going to be some, I just want to remember there's going to be some level of uncertainty either way because I think that's an important element as you all with us and try to make your decision. And with that, you know, I'm going to stay out of it, I'm not trying to advise, I just wanted to make sure that that was heard.
Thank you for sharing that, Sam, and I think that is, that really does hit home. Regardless of the decision that we make today in 2024, our health care provider, our plan will be different in 2024.
Thank you. Any further board questions, or shall I go to a public comment?
We have Brianna Lerman.
Hi there. Good morning. Brianna Lerman here on behalf of California Health and Wellness. We are the current Med-Cal plan serving your county, about 50% of the lives. I think I've spoken on this issue the last two meetings. Just a point of clarification, so Laura has referred to Centene, Centene is the parent company of California Health and Wellness, so you'll hear Centene, California Health and Wellness, and HealthMet, this all one of the things for the sake of conversation and I don't want anyone to get confused. So we've been in the county for the last seven years as well as the surrounding counties, and of course, hope to continue our service to you through this upcoming procurement. I just want to speak to this topic before you. It's really complicated and it's really confusing. I want to make sure, you know, for the board's sake, Mr. Chair and members, that we emphasize with a real question mark our commitment to remaining in the county through upcoming procurement, of course, hope we're protected. But I want to address a number of the issues that have come up in the course of the conversation. So the first one being, just a point of clarification, the department has put a title on this as model change, but really, you have two plans now and you have two plans in the future. The question before you is whether through this LOI, you want to get really a preliminary contract award outside of the bidding process to a public plan, so a government plan based in San Joaquin, so health plan of San Joaquin. We would, in that scenario, have two plans at the end of the day, just like we do today, it's just a little bit of, it's a different type of health plan you'd be exclusively partnering with. And then we would hope to bid for one of the remaining contracts, so just to make sure that's clear. So a couple of things, the neighboring counties around you are really important because your county as a service area and all the surrounding, it really operates as a region because of access issues and because of natural care patterns. So a couple of things have come up along these lines that I want to clarify, which is we, we have contracts almost throughout the whole state of California. I think that's a distinguisher and a benefit. And I'm listening carefully in this conversation, you know, in current state, future state, what the benefits will be and what this change will bring for you, and access has to be front and center. And because health plan of San Joaquin has not really done its due diligence yet and showing its network capacity, financial capacity, administrative capacity, I've according out to you that we know, care patterns from Sacramento, care patterns from Santa Fe, we cover all of those. I don't know if health plan of San Joaquin does. Time and distance standards are standards set in statute, that's correct, but I have to say there's also a pretty lengthy process for getting alternate access standards, which are really common in rural areas. So you're looking at the improvements this will bring, I don't know the access will be one just because of, by virtue of just lack of providers in the county, and certainly I think the number of providers in Alpine would be zero. So there certainly aren't any there that we would look to. So access is something I want to call out. And the other benefit that's come up has been governance. I just want to flag that governance and feedback groups and say in investments are something that's available to us at California Health and Wellness. It's not necessary to enter the model change to get that outcome, and that's something that we flagged in conversation. that we flagged in conversation. So, um, I just, I mean, this is a really complicated issue. The preliminary contract award carries some risk, because I think there's questions on feasibility for a plan to come in and build networks, uh, on, on the service area that started to look a bit like a checkerboard with counties that are proceeding and not. But regardless, um, we're happy to serve your county, we're pleased to continue doing it, and in fact, um, we care, we did follow through the conversation last time, um, the school lunches, um, the summer lunches in the library for kids, so we're excited to be partnering with that, and of course, excited to continue serving you. So, so thank you for listening to me, and, um, think this conversation should continue. If you, if you approve the LOI, it would be helpful if I continue to come before the board, because there's a lot of, um, details around it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Thank, thank you for your comment. Uh, it was enlightening. Um, any further public comments?
Could I just comment on Brianna's, uh, comment?
Yes.
So, uh, I, I've heard this come up, um, a couple of times throughout our presentations regarding, um, preemptively offering a contract with Health Plan of San Joaquin, and the question about the, the financial feasibility of them, um, going forward. And I just want to share that I submitted, um, to the board, um, a, a packet, um, and the Health Plan of San Joaquin, just like all of the other health plans, are going to have to go through an RFP process, um, but public models are submitting, um, uh, the LOI, and the LOI even, it, it sounds, it's misleading, it sounds like a letter of intent, but the LOI is a very rigorous package that contains all of the information about the financial, uh, sustainability of the plan, as well as their network and their oversight, and all of that was submitted to the board for your review, um, and, and this is not something that, um, had to be put together for us, but it, um, they provided it. And so we, you all have had an opportunity, um, to see what's going to be sent to the state, um, and, and that vetting process. So, um, I just want to mention that, um, we do know what their financial stability is and their oversight and what their provider network, um, looks like.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No, there's no further public comment.
Thank you. Any, uh, board statements? Mr. Garry Mendy?
Thank you very much, Chair Stoppa. Um, as, as I said, I went, I spent a lot of time researching this, and I, and I came up with a lot of questions, and some of them were answered, and some of them are impossible to be answered at this point of the game. Would it came, so I had to try to figure out what I, how I wanted to sort of make my pitch here, and I'm going to come down to just one very simple point. If we jump in bed with Health Plan of San Joaquin, um, we are going from having two companies, we're from going, having two private companies compete, uh, or compete to get the RFP to serve our community, to one that we're getting into bed right now, and as soon as October is done, if we haven't cut the deal, that's what it's going to be, and then we'll have everybody else competing for the one spot. My, my thought and my concern is, if the Health Plan of San Joaquin is the better mousetrap, and, well, let's assume they're a very good mousetrap, then they should compete with the private sector for our business to support our consumers. So people, if, if, if Health Plan of San Joaquin, the public plan, is the better plan, they could compete with the private sector and show us that they're the better plan. Don't tell us, trust us, we're going to figure this out, it'll work in Calveras, because I saw their original plan, which was a regional approach. Now, Tuolumne's gone, and Amador's gone, so I, and, and Eldorado is not connected. So I'm not sure how that all works out, but my bottom line philosophy is, if the government has a better plan, and this is a government program, then they could compete with the private sector and show us that they're, you know, that, that they're a better program for our consumers, because our people are the ones we have to worry about the most and the services they got. And I would like to see Health Plan of San Joaquin compete for it. So therefore, Mr. Chair, I will not be supporting this letter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garry Mendy. It reminds me of, you know, it's not medical, but, you know, being in bed with Delta College on the west side of the county, you know? Lots of promises were made, after the, after everything was signed and done and voted on, here we are with nothing in our hand. So, um, you know, I very much hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with the competition. You know, that's part of any healthy capitalist system.
Uh, could I just comment on that?
I'm going to let, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just want to say that I think if the state of California, the Department of Healthcare Services, would have, uh, allowed the Health Plan of San Joaquin to be part of the RFP in the bidding, they would. Unfortunately, they're following the guidelines that the state has put forth for them. So there, there's no other option for them. Um, they're just following, um, what, what is, the state has told them to do.
Thank you. Ms. Coway, did you have something?
Um, yeah, I understand what Supervisor Garry Mendy's saying. The problem is, is that they can't compete, or if they could, based on what Ms. Larson just said, until it goes out for bid statewide. So when they open it up to others, and it's like, if we don't pick this, then we go to the regional models we have, then, um, they would have to wait until 20, we would have to wait till 2024, um, to see what companies, commercial and/or otherwise, Health Plan of San Joaquin would bid. But if I heard what Ms. Larson said, they wouldn't be allowed to anyway. So, do I understand that correctly, Ms. Larson?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I'm upfront, I want to say, I too had many questions, and I want to publicly thank Ms. Larson for her yeoman's work on consistently answering very detailed questions that I had, um, on a subject that I found very difficult to understand. And, um, so I just publicly, Ms. Larson, want to thank you for all you've done. I, I truly appreciate it.
Thank you, it's been a great learning opportunity.
I hope to shout.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. Any, any other board comments? Mr. Topolli?
Yeah, I, I've had many concerns, too, on this item. And I'm kind of where Supervisor Garry Mendy is, and one of my other concerns are changing now, I, I haven't heard any, very, 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 very little from the public on this item. And, and nobody's really contacted to reach out, saying that, hey, I like the provider I have, I don't want to change, or I like the doctor I have, at least for now, at least till 2024, when the RFP goes out. I, I just don't see throwing that out right now, because I know myself, I've had the same doctor, um, for 30 years, and I'm very comfortable going to that doctor. He has all of my records and, and everything there, and, and there's a lot of people that feel that same way. They go to a particular doctor because they feel comfortable and they're within their plan. And, and so they develop a relationship with, with just not only a, a regular MD, but, but even a specialist that they're going to, to a specialist. And just to, to, to change that mid-span, I know it's going to be a big shock, because a lot of people probably, you know, don't even understand what we're talking about right here. But they try to go to their doctor and find out, they get a notice in the, in the mail that their doctor's no longer part of that plan, that they have to go to a different doctor, or choose one of these other doctors that are within the plan. I, I think would be a big shock, um, especially to the elder generation that we have here that are on these plans. So therefore, at this time, I, I can't support it.
I just, uh, ask a question. They're not going to be dropped this week in 2024, and it can happen anyway.
Correct, in 2024, yeah, but there's no contract with the same providers that we have with the two that we have now, through San Joaquin.
But in 2024, they're gone.
I, I understand that. So At least till 2024, and they may still be in that plan, if those providers opt into whatever, then they could still go forward. But right now, there's no guarantee that the same providers that we have with the two plans that we have now are with San Joaquin. And I, I just think that's going to be a shock to a lot of people, to find out we're going down this path on this plan, and there are providers that they're used to going to.
But it'll be a shock either way.
Well, at least we have till 2024, that's
But you'll have, we have till 2024.
And then that'll be the state's issue, and they'll have to pay attention to what's in the news on the state, because that RFP going out through the state, we'll be channel 13, 3, 10, it'll be all over what's going on.
I guess I'd say that I sort of was somewhat leaning that way, but either way, we're staying with what we have until 2024. We're just saying, in 2024, I do not want the state of California picking, um, one of my plans. And then, so I've sort of come full circle. My concern was more with the Health Plan of San Joaquin, um, and I just think it's in the best interest of the Med-Cal recipients of this county, um, for us to sign a letter of intent, um, with the Health Plan of San Joaquin. When I look, as Supervisor Garry Mendy did, at the details that you talked about, I mean, I can, Ms. Larson can just forward to you what she sent to me, and, um, I think it's in our, because our regional model's gone. And, um, are we, we are safe till 2024, the, our, it's gone. Then we get, if I, we get whatever comes out from the state. And I would like to think that since we are going to be on the board, whatever, however the board's formulated for the healthcare of San Joaquin, then it will be in our best interest to make sure that the issues of the Med-Cal provide, the Med-Cal recipients are met. And if I heard Ms. Larson talk, she said they have already started going out to the providers of the current, of our Med-Cal recipients, and bringing them on board as providers. That's what she just told us. So, um, I do support signing the letter of intent. I think it's a much more known commodity than hanging out in, in whatever land we hang out in till 2024. And so, those are my comments.
Ms. Larson?
Yeah.
We, if we put forward a letter of intent now and we sign on to this in October, we start the plan starting 2022, correct? Going into 2022?
No, 2024.
Okay, so there's nothing going forward until 2024, with signing up in October?
Correct. And the reason that we're doing this so early is there is so much that has to happen going forward. Um, the state has to look at, um, the letter of intent, they have to look at the Health Plan of San Joaquin, they have to assess them, they have to, uh, go through the vetting process, um, and, um, then the state has to do their other, um, RFP work, and so nothing is changing until 2024.
Understood, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Topolli?
Yeah, just, um, comments on what Ma- Mairead was saying. I completely understand that, but, but as what was said also before, i- if we don't join it and we go down the path with the state, the state has requirements, their own requirements, that the providers have to be within 50 miles. And all of the providers that are now providing to our, our constituents may not join the San Joaquin plan. They may not be happy with what's going on with them, but at least going down the state's plan in the future, I don't think they'll be eliminated from that plan, because they have to have those providers within their own confines of what they set forward, which could mean, if you join the San Joaquin and those providers opt out of that for, for whatever reasons, because they're happy with what the state sets up, then we could be sending constituents into San Joaquin or into Eldorado, because they're, they're providers now that could be in the state plan in the future, um, are no longer in San Joaquin's plan, or, or aren't in San Joaquin's plan, so they can't go there. But the state is going to set up, through their own parameters, what doctors are going to be available for the plans. And, and they have those guidelines, which was told to us on several occasions, and one of the reasons was 150-mile trips. Well, that's going to be part of what the state sets up. I, I just think that there's a possibility that all of the providers that we have now for our constituents aren't going to be part of that plan.
Okay. We've beaten this one for quite a while. Do we have any motions or more comments?
I move that we sign a letter of intent with the Health Plan of San Joaquin.
Is there a second? Dies for a lack of a second?
Because I think what we've done is we've now left it up, and the responsibility is going to wind up falling on us as a county.
Understood. Do we have a motion?
You did.
All right. So at this point, we're with, for dying for a lack of a second and no, no other amended emotion, uh, motion, not emotion, motion, um, that we're, as I see it, we'll be staying with our current plan as of this time. All right, Ms. Larson, I appreciate all the work and, and background you put into this. I know it's been a, I, I know you, uh, put, you know, your, your heart and soul into all this work, trying to move this forward, um, and that's not lost on us by any means.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. I think we're at a time where we can break for lunch. It's 11:53, let's, uh, go until 1:30?
1:30?
Or, or 1?
I, I better go with 1.
1.
I would give it 1:00 or 1:30, but I can make my own assumption.
Okay. 1 o'clock it is.
You want to run over and tuck Andrew a foot?
Welcome back to the Calveras Board of Supervisors meeting, April 26th, 27th, 2021. We'll be moving on to Item 18, Building. Introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, Chapter 3.53, Building Department Service Fees of the Calveras County Code. Conduct a public hearing, make a public benefit finding, and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Stoppa, members of the board, bed, order, chief building official. And what I have before you today, uh, especially for an afternoon right after lunch, I am going to talk about money and that, whichever one is excited to do right after a large meal. What I have before, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, jump to a presentation and discuss how we got here, and then once, uh, we get to the end of the presentation, I would like to point out a couple of, of minor corrections, uh, based on the fee study, show you, uh, the workload analysis from the fee study, and, uh, answer any questions you have, uh, without any, sort of, a do, let me go ahead and run to the PowerPoint. Let me go ahead and run to the PowerPoint. Okay. Okay, so essentially, the first thing that comes up when fees get changed is, you know, why are we doing this? So I just kind of wanted to briefly touch on that. Our department is an enterprise fund, and we need to recover any costs we spend providing services. And we have quite a few services that we do. We need to make sure in that cost recovery that the fee collection is relative to that service, so that we, so part of this fee study does show that, you know, how it's broken out, and, you know, to make sure that it's not in any way shared with any other revenue sources, which I'll get to a little bit later. Updating fees is necessary over time, because the workload changes as a function of building code, a function of the inspection services, and the other services that we provide, is that as codes change, as technology changes, as construction materials change, our workload changes. And as a result, sometimes these fees either become stale, or in many cases obsolete, which is what you'll see here. We need to reflect those changes in the workload, and also reflect, you know, the department over time using technology and other training techniques, we actually improve, and in many cases streamline. So where we have ordinances, codes, state, federal laws that change how we do the job that could increase time, we are also working to reduce time, streamline processes. And so, these fees reflect actual time spent, recognizing that, you know, after three to five years, we look at it again, are we spending the same amount of time, what codes are in effect, that sort of thing. In addition, updating the fees gives us an opportunity to demonstrate transparency in those services relative to the fees that are collected. And I'll get into a little more depth about how we demonstrate transparency to the public as we move on. So we have, this is essentially an immediate action item, which is why we've moved so fast to bring it to you. I noticed a year and a half ago, I kind of jumped in when you appointed me directly into a budget cycle. And the close of that budget was, gave us a pretty substantial surplus. Working on the 2021 budget, there was no surplus, based on the staffing necessary and the changes in the costs relative to those services, that surplus was not there. In addition, that prompted me to look a little further into the future, and that's when we saw that our fees are quickly running into absolutely obsolete and critical to how we do business. In addition, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to make some very fast changes in how we do business. And that included more technology, which we are putting the finishing touches on. But that allowed for remote work, for more online-type services, and expanding that technology beyond what we had originally purchased with our permit tracking software. So, you know, taken as a whole, we really needed to sort out the fees moving forward, so that we could continue to provide a better service, and also improve the service beyond where we currently are. I wanted to touch on our reserve fund briefly, because as an enterprise fund, as an enterprise department, we have a reserve fund. And essentially, we have to maintain a balance in there for two very important reasons. We balance the workload fluctuations, because in any, in any year, there's a construction and review cycle, where people are bringing in plans at one time of the year in preparation for the, you know, the sun to come out, and it's time to build. And so what we see is that we have a fluctuation throughout the year, a wave, if you will, of applicants and revenue coming in, followed by inspections, and a reduction in the people coming in to get permits, because now they're actually building and using the inspection side of our services. Going beyond that, there's also a fluctuation economically throughout, you know, anywhere for a three-year period, in some cases 10-year periods, that reflect code changes and just the overall economy of the state and the nation. So what we do is we have this reserve fund that ultimately is designed to provide emergency funds if the economy tanks, in order to make sure that we can provide the staffing necessary to complete the work that was paid for under the active permits that are currently under construction. This building department, as far as I could tell, the desire for how much is to stay in that kind of fluctuates between building officials. So my target goal is to provide at least six months of wages and benefits in the reserve fund, in order to fully staff the department in case of an economic downturn recovery. And then, any reserves that end up being collected beyond that should be spent on technology and training for staff on a yearly basis. That's, that is our building department's goal moving forward. Well, right with the reserve fund now, we've got some budgeted expenses. We have 50% of our total salaries and benefits shown here. We should have about a million dollars, and some change, in the reserve fund to make sure everybody can be staffed for that six months. Our current reserve fund total is just over 600,000, so we are short. Now, understanding we did draw down on that for the emergency technology, but it does need to be put back. And so we have to factor that into our program moving forward. So I want to touch on something that's really important to the public, and that is, what are we getting for our permit, permit fees? A principle for this department moving forward is that we should not ask the public for anything until we've demonstrated what we're worth, or what we're providing to them for that service. So just to touch on some of the things we've done in the last year and a half that I've been here. We've dramatically improved customer service. We've improved the communication with the fire districts, participating with them on the development of a fire prevention program, and working with them very closely on the cannabis enforcement program, and also coordinating with them on other unrelated code compliance cases. Better communication with our utility districts. We've been working very closely over better implementation of fire sprinkler requirements. We've seen a lot of progress with CCWD specifically, but also extending beyond that. We've improved communication with some of our other local districts up in the Murphy's area. And we've streamlined our permit types, so that they are easier to understand by the public, and also easier to implement for electronic services. We have faster plan and view timeframes. We've set tighter goals and provided standards for building, for plan of view, in order to give the public a general timeframe of when we should, if we're doing everything right, when we should be able to get a set of plans out. And, you know, what metrics are, if indeed we are running late, what is the issue, so that we can adjust our workload to compensate. We have written inspection standards that are for the public, they are viewable, they are measurable standard for any, anybody who obtains a building permit. They have an expectation of the service that we will provide. We also have new plan of view permit processing standards, just the processing of the permit alone needed to be streamlined, so that things could move out faster. In addition, we've created online permit application processing that we expect to expand on dramatically by July, which should, should your board adopt these fees, it will streamline our process such that it will allow for very easy access of the public to over-the-counter permits that can be processed online, they can apply online, they can request inspections online, they can see everything about their permit processing in real time on their, on their computer screen at home. So we've done a lot of work in the last year and a half to demonstrate that we have improved, we've, but, you know, the job isn't done. There's quite a bit more that we plan to do. Staff has done quite a bit in a short amount of time. So we're confident in saying that, you know, we're in the right direction, we're demonstrating we're heading the right way. We do, however, need to recover the costs, and we can continue to make this drive forward. So the targets for our fee structure, before we headed out on determining what the fees would be, we needed to make sure that we hit specific targets. One, they need to be easy to understand. The public needs to know, you know, what they can expect for the service, yes, but they also should be able to, at a glance, understand what the fee will be, and it appears to be reasonable and specific to that type of job. They need to coincide with the services provided, that we have to accurately reflect the work performed. Fees in general should be based on a reasonable time and quality standard for each step in the process. So that, you know, if I tell you that it takes four inspections, and it's an hour per inspection, looking at our standards, you can reasonably understand why. When compared against project workload, it should inform the county as to necessary staffing levels in each step of the process. So basically, on my end, and for me to demonstrate to your board the needs of the department, our fees should align with our workload in such a manner as, if the workload drops, we understand that the cost will drop, which also means the staffing will drop. So everything, everything in this fee study lends to a more, lends to more synergy between all of the aspects of our building department. Everything in this department is linked in one way or another, and the fee structure should represent that. And it should be easily adjusted at regular intervals based on the workload and overall cost recovery needs. So every three to five years, we should bring this back and look at it again, do another analysis, look at, look at our workload. And the framework I'm presenting to you today allows you to easily plug in your data and know at a glance what your staffing level should be, what your, your overall cost to provide these services are, and then be able to develop another round of fee adjustments, up or down, depending on the industry. And then, once again, once this is all done, a level of transparency for the public, which is why some of the changes we've made, such as putting this in an ordinance, is very important. In addition, though, we do have a couple of other programs that do need support. The Fire Prevention Program, which your board has directed me to start moving forward on. We did have fees in the 2008 fee adoption, relevant to fire prevention. And what we've done is taken advantage of the current technology and the amount of time spent currently, revised those fees, and made them easier to understand and apply. In addition, code compliance, the case management, as it stands, has been revised significantly. And in the streamlining, it is more appropriate now to have a charge for the service if a code compliance officer carries a case from the initial investigation all the way up to citation. There should be a cost recovery that is easy to implement, and does not take additional time for that individual to track for every time they get in the vehicle and drive out and do an investigation. So the code compliance program now has recommended cost recovery fees that would be collected on cases only if they've reached a level of citation. And then, once you get to the citation phase, anything after that is in a different category, which is nuisance abatement, which we'll get into in more detail a little bit later. So the line, with the building department performing several service types, it's important to indicate that in all forms of fees to be legal, no fee can be charged for a service where there's another funding source. So in this, in what I'm presenting to you today, the fee study backs out any other revenue that we're collecting, which is essentially our abandoned vehicle program, and some of the work we do for cannabis control, which is tracked separately. But in addition to backing out that, that cost, we also backed out the staffing level, because those individuals are paid for through that program. So that's how we make sure that we have adequately separated our revenue and staffing, so that the fees for all of these services that you see today, in no way mingle with those other funding sources. So what you see here is completely insulated from every, the other services that we do. The fee proposal before you is constructed to reflect specific staffing costs related to the services that are in this fee study. So we've kind of covered that, the program, we just covered that the program fees only apply to cases that reach citation. Nuisance abatement essentially is a whole different fund. We have a nuisance abatement fund, and that pays for staff time, contractors' time, dump fees, all of that that relates to the county actually taking action to clean up, clean up an issue. So those, those fees are separate, those fees get applied once the cleanup happens, and they are charged on a different account line, so that nothing mingles. Okay, so what we are recommending to your board today is that we adopt this, these fees as an ordinance, rather than a resolution. We found that in the adoption of the resolution, it was difficult to find after several, several different people in this seat, several different staff members arriving and leaving. It became hard to find the information, and when the public asks, you know, it takes a lot longer to dig the information out. Putting this in an ordinance gives us a level of transparency that allows anybody in the world with access to our website to see the ordinance, to see what our fees currently are. In addition, it lends to locking things in in a way that prevents any, any measure of ambiguity over what could or could not be charged. It's very transparent, and it's also very fun. When your board sets this as an ordinance, it's done, this is what we charge. The ordinance, hold on, I just read something just a moment. Yeah, we've implemented several items discussed by the board throughout the year. We streamlined the fee structure, like we're streamlining our permit types. You'll see that the fees really line up directly to a single permit type, or a series of permit types that share, share the same amount of work, or a similar amount of work. We have a greater degree of department transparency. We have worked into this ordinance the ability to waive fees for specific types of projects, we'll get into in just a bit. We've got better cost recovery for a fire prevention program that's under development, and we're hitting a measure of cost recovery for code compliance that before has not been, has not been able to be reached. So rather than charging an hourly rate based on each staff member, which is what we're currently doing, which is clumsy at times, and confusing at times, what we're recommending is an hourly rate based on the average hourly value of staff work. So when you look at the amount of billable hours across the staff necessary to perform these services, and you balance that against the cost to provide these services, you essentially land on an hourly rate that you can apply, based on the amount of time spent on any given service within this fee study. So that eliminates a lot of sliding scales, because what we can do is, we can apply a fee based on the average amount of work for any given permit type or service type, rather than relying on square footage sliding scales, which you're currently working through right now. We can also, because we have an hourly rate that is, that is balanced against the overall cost to perform the services, we can, in projects that don't cleanly fit into any one fee type or another, we can use hourly rate and, you know, work with the builder to understand their needs on a project, and then apply the hourly rate to that project to make sure that we have staffing available for the duration of their need for the service. The fees that you see here are based on a spreadsheet that is not set in stone. It does show you, the board, how many people would be necessary and the cost thereof. And it's currently set at 100% cost recovery. Your board could decide that in the interest of economic development, or you make a public finding of a need to reduce fees to stimulate the economy, you could decide that you want to reduce and direct the department to only capture 80% of the cost, or 10, or 90% of the cost, and then have general fund money offset. or 90% of the cost, and then have general fund money offset that. That could be negotiated. You put that capture rate in this spreadsheet, and it will give us a lower set of fees. In addition, you can choose to reduce any individual fee for, you know, making the findings that, for instance, water heaters. You could decide that a water heater, if it's $250 to install, we don't want a $130 permit. You could decide, in the interest of making sure that people have safe water heaters, that we can lower that to $50. Your board can make that direction, and it would change the cost recovery. But these things can be done by direction of your board, and that is how this spreadsheet was designed. And in addition, we can bring it back for an update whenever there's an economic, regulatory, or construction, environment change. If we have a significant change. For instance, many years ago, introducing residential sprinkler systems was a big change. And that increased workload for the field inspectors, for the plans examiners, increased workload for pretty much everybody because we had to take off a whole other facet of work in the construction of a new dwelling. That could trigger us coming, you know, something similar to that could trigger us coming back to your board in a couple of years and saying, okay, we have this new code, and that's generated this much more work. So here's the new fee study. So the way this is designed is, is once we get used to it and we're using it, whenever there's a significant change or it gets stale, we can bring it back to your board, and you can decide if it's worthy of an adjustment. And as I said before, we currently are proposing 100% cost recovery. What we're bringing to your board is far simpler than what we had. And in addition to that, no one has to make a records request to see what the fees are. They're in the ordinance. They can search for it. We can search for and print a form. And they're tied directly to the work that we do and the standards that we set for that work. So in addition to the inspection standards, which show you what we're going to do in the field when we go out to do a frame inspection, there's also a time standard that says, on average, we're going to spend an hour and a half, an hour to an hour and a half inspecting for that frame inspection. So the fees are tied directly to performance of our staff. What we're also proposing is that certain fees be waived by our office for the following projects. County property, anything on county property for a nonprofit organization, and county projects or county-sponsored projects. What we can't, we can't make it my discretion. I can't say I'm going to back this one. I'm not going to back this one. This is essentially, your board should direct me to either waive something all the time or don't ever waive it. And in these two cases, whether it's a county project or, you know, a nonprofit on county property, your board has expressed before the desire to just be able to waive those fees. So our ordinance as proposed to your board would indicate that for these projects, if it's identified as either of these two, we automatically waive the building permit fees. And in addition to that, for housing projects, affordable housing, your board has the authority to waive the building department fees by resolution for projects of public benefit. So not just for affordable housing, but, you know, you are allowed to make those findings on a case-by-case basis, which, if it is requested, I would take it to your board for review and approval. The fire prevention program that your board has asked us to undertake has a lot of moving components that didn't necessarily have before. There are some that were standard. Hotels and motels have been inspected for a long time. Apartments, apartment complexes, yes. Changes of occupancy are also something in commercial buildings that are very important that we need to get inspected. This is commonly linked to the business license component of a business so that when the building department reviews a new business license application, we determine if the building has changed uses, and we determine if we need to go out and inspect it to make sure it meets minimum fire code and building code for the type of use that they're going to move into that structure. Now, in the ordinance that you see before you, there is an error. It says business license inspection. I don't want to misunderstand that. We're going to change that language. It's commonly called an occupancy inspection. And it's done in several jurisdictions that have business licenses. It's either done by the fire department, building department, or both. And in conversations with the fire districts, the fire districts in their JPA have discussed the option of some departments opting in and some opting out. If they don't have the staff to do it, they're asking that we bring to your board an MOU or we would do it for them. And so that fee should be there to make sure that we capture cost for that specific service. There was a similar fee in the 2008 fee structure. It was called a special inspection or investigation fee. That was, as I understand it, that was the fee that was meant for that purpose. I'm not certain how often it's been used, but we do need to enhance that service now that we're moving forward with this fire prevention program. In addition, certain hazardous business types have what's called an operational permit requirement in the fire code. And so we've accounted for that in the fee study as well. So in order to recover the cost of fire inspectors to provide these services, fire service fees have been included in the fee study, and they are similar to 2008 fee adoption. Okay, so I've kind of come around a couple of times on the code compliance thing. Essentially, those fees are meant for any case that reaches citation, and we actually issued that citation. So if someone gets their courtesy letter and they correct the violation, they don't see these fees. We get to the notice of violation. We're warning them in that document that if you don't resolve this within the appropriate timeframe, there will be a citation, and it will be this much. We will let them know. Coming up to it, if that situation is not corrected, we will be charging a specified fee. And that, you know, the nuisance abatement fund is what is catching our nuisance abatement costs, so none of that is blended into this. Okay, so when we started the fee study, the first thing we did is we audited all of our services directly. We went through some of our, well, all of our old inspection and review data that we could, that we could find in 2008 standard, 2008 time motion study that was being done by a previous building official. We filtered out the information into the different working groups and employee groups. And then, once we had that, we plugged it into the workload model and moved towards placing that into an ordinance. We also checked these service types against our neighbors' fee studies or their fee structures to see if we're in the ballpark. And by and large, we are. Your board has a copy of a comparison chart for our most immediate neighbors. And while everybody is slightly different, we are in the ballpark. And why we would all be different is, and we all enforce the same code, but we all have different topography, geography. We have different employee bases. There's a lot of other moving parts in addition to just the construction methodologies that lends to different ways to enforce to accomplish the same goal. So you will see that fees aren't always identical from place to place, but they are similar. So once again, the data used in the fee study is mostly 2018 staff entries. Time motion study for field inspectors, because we streamlined quite a bit. We provided standards for inspection. We had to do a time motion study for those inspectors to make sure that if they're implementing the quality standards, how long does it take to do that effectively? So we did a time motion study on that. In addition, we did a time motion study for code compliance. And that's based on our current case management procedures and average drive times. If we have significant streamlining beyond this, it may be something that we would take back to your board to look at. Planner view timeframes are based on the established time standards by permit type. We have specific time standards for each of the major permit types. And so we've based it directly off of that because, once again, we've had a significant amount of changes. So old data for planner view times is not accurate. So we based it off of the minimum standard. Fire inspector timeframes were extrapolated from similar building inspections and similar planner view types. In addition, we checked with the neighboring fire districts that have fire marshals that do some of this work to see if we were consistent with what they were doing. And we used timeframes based on that. And then our staff hours, specific to the services provided, were generated by subtracting the total hours spent by employee from the total FTEs. So for every one person that works here, there's 2080 hours. And you back out everything that is not directly related, you know, the indirect tasks that would be overhead, if you will. So answering phone calls that don't generate a permit, meeting someone at the front counter about something that does not generate a permit. These are still services that we're providing that don't lend directly to, but they end up being overhead. So it's subtracted by that amount, and that lands you at the actual amount of billable hours per person that you can use. And now I get to go. Now that we have the black screen of doom, I get to go bring up our fee study so I can show you what that looks like. Just a moment. You guys can see that. Okay, so I'm going to scroll briefly through the fee study here to get us to the tables. So this is the calculation here. And our FTE calculations identified for the types of services, permit tech, plans examiner, building inspector, fire inspector, and code compliance. We have our starting FTEs, then we go through all the time that isn't directly related but is overhead. So our holidays, our sick time of vacation, lunches, they're all backed out. Training's backed out as well. We can't do inspections and be in a classroom. So we back out the minimum requirements by state law for training. And then also our supportive services, which is our phone calls, our meetings, the things that don't directly relate to the service. And then you have a net FTE value, and that is what was used in the workload, the revenue study. Each one of our processes were broken down by the data that we retrieved from 2018. So we have the different types of services that go into the creation of each permit here. This is specific permit technician time audit. So building inspections, code compliance, all that had a similar process used for determining the actual total amount of time, which was then put into that last worksheet in the system. I'm going to skip ahead a few of these because your board has seen them. But if you'd like to go back to any of the slides in the fee study, let me know. I'm trying to be conscious of your time today. There's a lot here. Okay, so the numbers that I've showed you, I'm going to give you a bigger version of this. Okay. So what you see here is our building services, work time, cost, and revenue analysis. This is a nexus of the work we perform on these services and the staff time necessary to do it, and the amount of people necessary to fill that staff time. As you see, the first thing we do here, which is consistent with state law, the first thing we do is we determine on what we can expect for a workload. So in that workload, we estimate the amount of each type of permit we expect to receive an application form process. And then, as you move across, you've got your permit types and your projected annual quantity. Then you move into your staffing resources and what is necessary. Scroll up here. Based on that amount, you're going to see how many people are necessary. By billable hours, that number in the number two on the right-hand side, those are the numbers that we got from our FTE calculation. What's on the left is the amount of actual people. Okay, so you'll notice that some of these numbers aren't, do not align with the total amount of staff I have because those other staff members are performing AVA and other duties that do not in any way interact with this fee structure. So they're not included here. So what you see here are the staffing that is required to hit our targets. Anywhere along this line, I apologize, let me not jump ahead. From there, we can determine what our overall cost will be, and that is placed on item three. So our annual expense that we can expect to provide all the services here is placed here. And then, what your board wants as far as cost recovery is there. So the intent is to capture 100% at this time, so that's what was placed there. Once we've accomplished that, then our hourly rate is clear for purposes of determining what the rest of those fees will be. Now going to the fourth item in the list, and that's determining your hours. So for instance, our budgeted average permit tech hours. The table I just showed you previously that calculated the total amount, those totals are placed here. We did the same thing with planner view, fire, inspection, code compliance. So any given task, you can look across this spreadsheet and see who's doing what work. And in some cases, you see that some of those employees aren't doing any work, which means we're not charging for that. So for instance, manufactured home. Fire prevention guy does not see a manufactured home. If you scroll a little further over, you will see that a building inspector does, though. Okay, so if I was to highlight, for instance, that manufactured home, we can see it takes about an hour and a half. On the front side and the backside, our permit technicians don't just take in the plans and enter it into the system. The permit technicians also check to make sure the plans are acceptable. They route them to the other departments. They make sure that they end up in plan check and a method that can be reviewed. At the end of the project, when the permit is filed, the permit technician is responsible for monthly maintenance, to purge old records, to scan and retain documents that are required by law. So that 1.5 hours encompasses from the life of the permit, all the work that permit tech does. Moving along into the other employee types, we have, like I said, no one in fire touching it. Building inspectors, we have 4.28 hours for building inspector. That encompasses three inspections with a potential re-inspect on average. Well, actually, it says here five total stops. So that accounts for drive time. That accounts for everything that that inspector does as part of his inspection. And then, at the end of that, it calculates the total hours. And then, based on the hourly rate per project, it gives you a calculated fee. So that was done across the board for all of these fee types, for all these service types. Moving down, there's a couple that I do want to show you that, you know, we need to make sure that we correct on the ordinance moving forward. This item right here, address assignment. I did have that entered. I'm going to have to apologize. For some reason, it did not save before your board saw it. The address assignment was factored into this, and somehow it did not save on the ordinance version that was entered for your board to review. I will be adding that to match the fee study, which is currently, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, $203 for that service, unless your board decides to modify it. In addition, what your board has seen in the ordinance as business license inspection, there is the occupancy inspection right there. And we expect, based on the workload, we're going to have a lot of them. Want to make sure businesses are safe, and that will be the fee for the occupancy inspection. But once again, unless your board decides to change it. At this time, that's essentially our study in a nutshell. Do you have any questions or anything else you would like me to show you?
Ms. Cowley, your light's on.
Ms. Alver, there's some things, the last one, the one you did, address assignment. I couldn't understand why it would be so much. What am I missing? Also, I'm just going to go over just a few things. And I don't know if it's still occurring. When home seller, realtors call and ask, was this house or porch or garage or whatever permitted? And they request that, do we charge for that? I understood your water heater example. It costs $250 for the water heater, but it costs us $150 to get it inspected. I heard what you said, but I'm not sure what it, I understand what it is you're maybe asking. Or is that just an example where the cost of the item, in this case, the water heater, even though the cost is low, it still is X amount of time to inspect it, so it's 150. On code enforcement, the, where do we recover the cost before it goes to a citation? Is that general fund expense? And going back to the fire plans, fire inspector for plan review, in some cases, it might be the fire district that does the review. In other cases, it would be whom? Your department? And if it's a fire district, then I'm assuming it's what the fire district charges versus what you charge? And do we still do the $900 water enhancement fee? And is that managed out of your department? And if so, where does that fit in? Thank you. Is that enough questions for the moment?
I got room on the page for three more.
Oh, okay.
No, I'll see if I can answer all these in turn. So the address assignment. The original fee in the 2008 fee study was $28 for review a 20, per hour. And what ended up happening is that would mount, that would actually, you know, over two, three, four, five hours of work with staff, they'd get billed hourly depending on the complexity of what they were doing there. What we've done is based on an average. And of course, that was in 2008, $28 or in 2008. It went a lot further than it does now, especially when you're talking about overhead. But in essence, an address assignment usually requires that they submit a site plan to us that meets a minimum standard so that we can identify where their driveway is intersecting the roadway. And then we have to use our GIS data and often recorded maps to determine where they are along the road as far as how many feet so that we can establish the appropriate address, which is one address per six feet of the length of that property. So sometimes we have very interesting moving parts, like driveways that go through multiple parcels, which trigger other requirements that we ask them to provide data for. For instance, showing that they have legal rights through an easement to access neighboring properties. The list goes on. But generally, what we've done is we've taken an average so that we don't end up charging, you know, upwards of $400 in some cases from the past. We would much rather have a, you know, an on-average fee and then we can, you know, work with the customer to get them done in an expeditious manner. Did I answer that question good enough before I move on to the next one?
Yes.
Okay. So the document lookup that you're talking about is relevant to when a prospective landlord or a realtor calls in and says, hey, can I see the records on this before they, you know, before someone purchases a lot? That is included in our overhead. We don't have a direct fee for that. That's a service to the public that we provide. And so that's what we call an indirect cost that we're collecting in here. But there's no specific fee for that. In fact, we're trying to reduce the time it takes to provide that service by getting more scanned into our electronic system and giving access publicly to our records so that they don't have to come in the office and, you know, receive a copy of everything. They can see it online, they can see it at home on their own login to our building department's website, actually, the permit management website. So yeah, we're trying to get rid of the time spent on that. But for now, my understanding was that your board would prefer that to be a public benefit, that we didn't charge a fee to the person for. So that was not included in this fee study. Is that, was that answered?
Yes.
The water heater fee was an example. The actual fee that is being recommended here is $130, which is the lowest fee we have here. And that's recognizing, if you look across the board, there isn't a whole lot of time spent on a water heater. The processing of the permit is similar. But the inspection, it's critical, but it doesn't take that long. And it also factors in the fact that we don't go out many times. We prefer to only be out there for one inspection. Water heaters are usually incredibly easy to inspect, and they're usually correct. Generally, because if they got a permit, they generally got a contractor that is certified or, you know, bonded and insured, and they know we're coming out to inspect it. They hit all their safety targets. It's usually a one-off. In some cases, we do see unusual situations come up where we need to go out a second time. The water heater is permitted structured so that we go out once. If we have to go out again, they pay a reinspection fee, which is also included in the fee study. And you'll find that the amount of time that we're showing for the building inspectors only builds in a handful of reinspects so that we keep the cost down. So on a single-family dwelling, for instance, the time spent in there only accounts for maybe up to four reinspections. The builder wants to save money, they know what they're doing, we know what we're doing, they have our standard. We can keep the cost down on the permit by giving them the opportunity to hit our target standards, get through with the minimal inspections necessary. And if for some reason they want to have us out long, they can pay the additional inspection fee. There have been jurisdictions, and I'm looking at moving forward in this direction, where if a major project comes in and they decide they want to have a building inspector there every day, we can provide them that service. They can pay us for that hour, two hours of inspection based on the complexity for every day, and we'll make sure there's an inspector there for them every day. So this water heater fee currently, as it is at 130, is really built to keep it as low as possible and recover costs. Your board, by example, could decide that we want to facilitate as many people getting water heaters or water heater permits as possible, and you don't want the fee to be a deterrent. If you decide to lower that fee, that means that there will be less cost recovery, which means that would be essentially what we would ask for in our next budget to subsidize from the general fund. So that was the example on water heaters, essentially. Would you like me to answer the next question, or?
Sure, please.
Okay. Before citation, essentially, we're not going to collect. Your board has mentioned a handful of times that there's a certain amount of public benefit, and you want to encourage people to comply. So the goal has been to only charge if they're non-compliant. So the citation is really the trigger because if we've given them a warning, we've given them a courtesy notice, which is, hey, we noticed something. And then it moves to a notice of violation where it's, we, you know, you're officially on notice. Please comply before this date to avoid a fine. If they decide to blow past that stop sign, then we would charge a fee to recover those costs, which means that, yeah, there's a potential that there's going to be several of these that now that we have a fee structure that rewards people for doing well, we could find that many of the cases get cleaned up before we charge the fee. That would be a good problem, in my mind. We've estimated the amount of workload based on the amount of citations that we expect. But that could change. And with proper education and good notification to the public that there's a reward for complying, what you may see is that there will be a reduction in revenue recovery in those code compliance cases. So that's, you know, we're doing the best we can to show some accuracy here. It may turn out that if there is going to be a lack of cost recovery, it may be because people have responded well to this fee structure.
Ms. Alver, though, the code officer goes out and maybe goes out a couple of times, writes a letter. How is that time accounted for? I mean, is the general fund subsidy, is that part of a general fund subsidy? Or is that part of the post-citation cost?
Well, for this budget, for this fee relative to this budget, if your board adopts these fees, that means that I'm going for 100% cost recovery, which means that if there's any shortages, it comes out of my building reserve fund. It would not come out of the general fund. Moving forward in the future budgets, if I know, you know, a relative percentage of code compliance cases were not recovering cost on, then I can come back to your board and say, okay, the fee structure is this. Here's a surprise. You know, people are complying at a lot higher rate than we expected. And so rather than use reserve fund, which I'm trying to improve, I could then, next year's budget, ask if, you know, a subsidy comes from the general fund. Currently, the code compliance program is budgeted for over, around $500,000, which last year was around $400,000 in general fund revenue. If your board adopts this, and then we adjust our annual budget accordingly for July, what you'll find is that that $500,000 would not be requested. That would be general fund money that we would not be asking for because these fees are going to be, are going to offset that. We are recovering our costs rather than asking for general fund money. Moving forward, if we find that compliance, that this compliance thing is working great, we may ask for, you know, maybe $50,000 or maybe, I'm just throwing a number out there. I don't have a, you know, anything accurate because this is new. But I can say that it will be dramatically less reliance on the general fund if this works. And if our numbers are accurate, that these are the citations that we will write, then this is the cost recovery we will get, and we will not be asking for general fund. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
No problem. And then moving up, let's see, the building slash fire fees. We're still working out with the fire JPA, we're still working with the districts on the MOU and how we're going to work together on who does what work in each district and how that cost is recovered. These fees are intended to recover the building department's cost if they do the work. So for instance, in Murphy's, let's say, Murphy's fire could decide, we are going to do the inspections on the operational fire permits. Okay, so we'll issue the fire permit, but it may turn out that they don't want us to inspect. What they would do is bill us for their time on the inspection directly. We would pay them out of our revenue, which means that the inspection is being done at the same standard because our inspectors are doing it the same way they're doing it. The difference is they would be charging the building department for doing the work, similar to if I hired a contract inspector. That's at least what we're talking about now. In essence, though, if they could take, you know, Murphy's fire or Calco or any one of those types could decide, not only do we want to do the work, we want to issue our own permits. In which case, we don't issue the permits, we don't collect the revenue, we don't, you know, we don't pay for outside services. That's all that district's responsibility, and they're taking it from there. So in essence, all those fire fees that we're showing here, similar to the 2008 fee study, those are, if our department does that work, we are collecting that fee to offset our cost.
Thank you.
No problem. And then also the water enhancement fee. The $100 water enhancement fee is applied if you're over 1,000 feet from a hydrant. And it applies differently based on whether it's commercial or residential. It is intended as a separate fee to maintain enough water tenders for the fire districts to be able to put out fires where there is limited municipal water. And so that is an entirely different funding source for the fire districts. So we do collect that still, and there are exemptions if the individual property can demonstrate that they, you know, they all have, one, if they're within 1,000 feet of the fire hydrant, then they're not subject to the fee. But in addition, if they can demonstrate that they have adequate stored water with a fire department connection on the property, then they can ask for a waiver of that fee as well.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cowley. Those two additional questions filled up your question page, so good job.
I'll flip pages, I got a whole other piece of paper right here.
Any other supervisors at this time? Mr. Toffinelli?
Yeah, I just have one question, Doug. I'm, let's say I'm building a, what you have there are average square foot bases for a commercial building of 20,000 square feet. And I pay the permit fee of $8,218. And I have subs out on the job. And let's say, before we pour concrete, you come out and inspect the plumbing. And you red-tag the plumbing. And you got to send your inspector back. Is there a separate fee for that? Or if you, and then you, we pour the concrete and the framer, you red-tag the framer, and you have to send your inspector back to re-inspect the framing because you red-tagged it? Is there a separate fee for that? Or is that all included in this $8,218 that I paid upfront for the permit?
That's an excellent question.
Item 22 supplemental fees, I believe. I could be wrong, but that's the way I read it.
Right, I do want to, I do want to show, once again, the fee study so I can show you how we are handling this. Because reinspection fees are part of it. However, can you see, can you see that workload analysis now? Okay, so let me just highlight the new commercial. Okay, so when you get to the average inspection hours, you have a total stops here. We calculate on average for 17 total stops on a new commercial building. Which means that as long as they're still in the ballpark, we're not going to charge any additional fees. So if we give them a stop work, generally, stop works don't happen in new construction anymore. I don't know if they happened while, before I got here, but we don't generally red-tag people. We do write a correction note, but most of the time, we no longer stop work if we can avoid it. What we do is we say, please collect these items. And then when we come out, if you've done anything else beyond that, let's look at that. Many times, we can say, okay, to continue. And a good example is in a frame inspection, whether it's commercial or residential. If we go into a frame and there's 10 items, if those 10 items aren't hidden by insulation, okay, call for an insulation inspection, and we'll look at these two. So we're not nickel-and-diming the big projects by any means. 17 inspections builds in roughly four reinspects without having to write them a reinspection fee. So in the history of fee collection for building departments, reinspection fees re-inspection fees have been viewed as a punitive aspect. They're not, especially in this fee, this fee system. We're not punishing people for not, you know, for having corrections. Corrections happen, especially as complex as, as our construction codes are now. The, the re-inspection fee is to recover costs when it goes beyond what is average for that type of project. So in this case, it's 17 inspections. If it looks like we're coming up to 16 and they got three more stops before we get to, to final, then we would write a, a note to them identifying that, you know, hey, let's sit down and talk. Let's see how many inspections you need to complete this. And if we can get it done, great. If not, if there's three more inspections beyond the 17, pay us a re-inspection fee per, or what they call a supplemental fee per stop, and we're happy to come out. So that's, so that's how we're looking at it now. We're, we're setting a ma- an average threshold. And then whatever they need beyond that, we would recover costs separately. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on how that was going to work. Thank you.
Much appreciated on that answer, Doug. Very good. Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Doug. You took a good chunk of time yesterday to go through my questions. And I greatly appreciate your patience with me. I think it'll make this meeting shorter. Doug, we discussed this yesterday, but I thank you very much for changing the business license inspection to a change of occupancy on the next, on the version that will be final on this. My first question is on section code C4 cannabis violations. Why is cannabis violations not just simply a health and safety code violation? We wouldn't call out a different industry for a type of violation? So is there, is it, is it possible to combine those with other things? Just make it, you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law?
Absolutely. And let me, let me explain that. My, my history with, with cannabis violations going back to, you know, several years ago in, in my former life across the lake. Cannabis violations in the past were always linked to a lot of other issues and they cost additional time. And our cost recovery was separated out. And that was provided in a similar way here to identify that, yes, we have health and safety violation cases. We have no permit violation cases. But cannabis violations are, you know, were viewed as unique because they are, they, they often tie several types together. But in this jurisdiction, I can say that with our involvement in the sheriff's office and in the, the workflow that we have set up here is unique. And that means that most of these code compliance cases that are cannabis violations, the workload in the end is similar. We do have to spend more time being very, very precise on our citations because they, because of the laws that govern cannabis cultivation. But the inspections don't take near as long as they used to. And so, you know, it is entirely fair to say that your board could direct me to eliminate that particular type of fee and combine, you know, basically call a cannabis violation similar to a health and safety violation or a, you know, a general code enforcement violation. You could just say, take that off the list. And, you know, your board considers it this type of, of case, and we will guide off of that.
Yeah, I was just, I, I think as you and I discussed yesterday, it is a viola- I mean, I'm glad you guys are going after the bad guys and, and getting them. But I want to make sure that, you know, we don't have special rules for special industries. If you're violating a health and wellness, health and safety code, you're violating the health and safety code. And cannabis cultivation, as I understand, it comes under that. So that would just be a suggestion to, for the board. The second one is I worry about the appeals. We're charging $770 for an appeal. And I want to make sure people have access to adjudicate whatever their problem may be. And I worry about barriers to entry for that. I know planning commission only charges $500. And we got a lot of pushback when we increased that for reducing people's access to an appeal. Have you thought about that? And do you think, I mean, it's not a cost recovery. If somebody's appealing something, it's, it's the board to take it on. So is that something you could, you might have a different number on or think about as well? I want to make sure people have access to, to, to appeal.
It, it's entirely fair to say that, that your board may want to encourage a reduced fee or, or completely take it off of this, this ordinance. And we would recover it on the, on the backside after, after the hearing is concluded. It was provided here, because that's what I'm used to from, from my, my past life, a recovery method that if they win, they get it back. It, it's, it's, it's common based on what area of California you're in. But like I said, I, this, this, we only process maybe one, one a year at best. And so if your board decides either way to reduce it or eliminate it, I will, I will take your guidance.
If I may just jump in very briefly, that would certainly be a policy decision for the board. I just want to make it clear that it is in fact cost recovery. There is obviously staff time, significant staff time involved in dealing, processing and dealing with appeals. My understanding is that that $500 planning appeal fee doesn't even cover the cost. So while the board certainly could, for policy reasons, decide to reduce that, it is intended to recapture costs.
I, I understand. And, and, you know, we are a service, not always a cost center, although we tend to blend the two. I just want to make sure that we've got some pretty stiff fines here and, and I'm not, I don't support this. I want to make sure that people have access to, to appeal. And they can afford to appeal. And I think that should probably be on us to defend ourselves if somebody questions. But we could bring that up in discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. Sorry, Ms. Feldorff, you're about to speak, but I just wanted to touch on. One worry about combining the cannabis violations to the violations impacting health and safety that I would have is that Mr. Oliver did touch bases. It's gone down significantly on the cost these years, especially when you see the difference of, let's say cannabis violations being at 770 and a health, violations impacting health and safety at 937. So at that point, I think we would be going backwards in the cost recovery phase of charging more than what it actually costs. And we're not supposed to be making money on the situation. That would be a worry of mine on that one, you know? The appeals, I completely concur with Ms. Edwards. I was impressed when Mr. Oliver just said that he's only had about one appeal a year. My, when I was on the planning commission, we had about, some days with 15 appeals in a meeting the first year. So it's dropped significantly because everybody that was, you know, not getting quite what they wanted was throwing $100 at the appeals back then and be able to go through the process, which it takes an astounding amount of staff time to go through it. I mean, I, I would just throw, I would just throw down a couple hours by, by our council, would eat that up. And then we start throwing everybody else that gets involved into those that, you know, from the planning director to the director of cannabis control and everyone else, to the people that actually do the work and submit it, that work underneath them is outrageous amount. We're loo- we're, we'll lose any which way we have. But I just want to be careful about talking about that and lowering it because we could end up with a flood that we can't afford.
I would never suggest that we take it down to 100. I just think that, you know, people have the right to petition the government for grievances. And they don't have, sorry.
If they have the right to petition their government for grievances and we're putting a barrier that most of them can't reach, then are we violating some of their rights to appeal to us?
That's understandable. And I, I don't disagree with you.
I'm not a constitutional lawyer, but-
Neither am I. But that's, that's a good point. I'll, I'll go ahead and reserve the rest of my questions. Ms. Feldorff, did you have any? Oh, I have, I have, I have a list that's going to fill up two pages.
Doug, I have a question on 3.5303, which is the waiver of fees. I'm a little concerned about the language in A and B without having a little bit more accountability and depth on what would be calculated as a waiver. You know, the county, especially when it come into county-owned property. Earlier today, we talked about administrative fee recovery. And I don't want to dismiss county time, staff time. And what we put forward, if we're not accounting that for potential recovery in other areas, whether that be through a grant or other type of compensation for staff, so I'd be a little worried of not having more clear guidelines on that. And what justifies the building versus the board of supervisors to waive those fees? And what type of dollar amount are we looking at? Because either way, we're going to be putting that money out of general fund or any other type of budget. And then with nonprofits and other organizations, more guideline clarity on that as well. So there's not one person favoring a different one organization over another because they don't agree or disagree with what their, their organization stands for. So I want to make sure that there's some clear guidelines on how that's going to work. So we don't have that coming back, bitterness and bitterness in the future.
If I may, the language, let me see if I can explain the language here because I, I work with county council on this to make sure that we, we didn't essentially set a gate wide open. So item one, county-initiated projects on county-owned property. It's pretty standard in the industry that if the county is doing work on its own property, that the county technically doesn't even have to get building permits. The, the law, you know, the government code would say that we are exempt from obtaining permits. We're not exempt from following the code. We're not exempt from getting inspections. We're not exempt from plan of view, but we are exempt from getting a permit. Most jurisdictions will go ahead and get the permit in order to, you know, show solidarity with the public. We're getting the permit. We're following the exact same process as the public. Well, in this case, you know, what ends up happening is then, you know, the county doesn't necessarily have to pay itself. So this language, county-initiated projects on county-owned property, would essentially say, we're going to charge a fee on the permit because we're not even technically supposed, you know, technically have to get a permit. What that also means is that it separates that type of project out of these, these fees, of these services. Because generally, if we're working on a county project, on county property, it's a separate program. A good example is, for instance, if a jail is being, a brand new jail is built, being built, the county may decide, we're going to use building inspectors that are employed by the county to do those inspections. That person is out of commission for a year and a half just inspecting a jail every day until that jail is done. That would mean that, that would be a separate discussion at, at budget time about, you know, the, the capital improvement project funding a inspector position. So it's a separate fee, it's a separate revenue recovery stream, a separate process. And so that one item there takes, automatically takes a county project out of this process and, and puts it into that other category. Projects to be constructed on county-owned property, the item two, by nonprofit organizations who lease the property below market rate. That limits the, the projects that can be, that should be waived to anybody who's already entered into an agreement with the county and is leasing at below market rate. So it, it really narrows it down because if someone comes in and says, I get a waiver on these fees, my first, my first response is, let me see your lease with the county. Because that's the trigger. And, and that way, if they can show me a lease and it's below market rate, I can, I can work through admin and, and verify through administration that they, you know, they meet the criteria, then I waive the fee. So it doesn't, just because a nonprofit is, is leasing county property doesn't mean they automatically qualify. That lease agreement has to be present and we have to establish by this, this item that they are at below market rate with their lease. So it does, it does limit it quite a bit. And the, the item B, I'm not certain what we could do to, to make, I guess I'll reach out to council on that one. Is there a way to make it clearer as far as what fees can be waived by resolution? I mean, there is a resolution process that, that I would employ to take it to the board in order to waive the fee. But it's not, that's not an automatic waiver. I have to bring a resolution to your board if someone reckon, requests it.
Anytime the board needs to make a public benefit finding, that is, you're correct, that to waive a fee that has to go to the board. It wouldn't necessarily have to be by resolution, though. It could just be board action.
Okay, we could, so do we change the language from by resolution to by board action or?
I think it would depend on if we were talking about a category, a sort of a categorical finding and exemption from fees or whether it was on a more individual basis.
By resolution or board action?
Or just take that out and say the board may waive building fees if a public finding can be made? Would that, would that work?
It would certainly be accurate to say that the board may waive fees whenever, upon a finding of public benefit, yes.
So is, is the consensus of your board that I remove by resolution from section 3.5303O, item B?
I'm a yes, you a yes?
Yeah.
You a yes?
Yes.
You a yes? Yes. That's five yeses.
Very good. So the, the final version that I bring before your board will include that, that stricken component.
Are you content with this explanation on A?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that there's just accountability and it just not to become a fruit for all and it's not favor any type of favorism and that we, that I do diligence. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything further, Ms. Feldorff? Okay. A couple of things, Doug. You know, sometimes being a numbers nerd. I'm going to just start off with your technology cost on initial investment, you know, through COVID. There will be, yes, there will be recurring costs for upkeep or updates. But is initial investment being accounted for in upcoming years as costs will go down in comparison to the initial investment in your, in your study?
I assume I understand, if I understand you correctly, in my presentation, I identified that I spent just over $200,000 or budgeted for $200,000 at mid-year to pick up the technology I needed. And that was technology for the field inspectors for electronic documentation in the field. That was for a, a large scanner for scanning plants for electronic planner view. And that was for things like the, the additional modules in our permit tracking in order to move towards more online services. So those costs themselves are one-time costs, so they will not be reflected moving forward. Now, streamlining and reductions in the amount of time that we're going to be spending on things, there comes a point where you can't reduce the time any further. You're just moving it somewhere else. So while we can streamline our permit, our inspections or our permit flow, we can shotgun things out to the other departments and do it electronically. Uh, whether it's in your hand as a piece of paper or on a screen being reviewed, you're still doing the same review, so you are spending, uh, the same amount of time. So right now, we, you know, after that initial purchase, the time I anticipate anyway, the time that we save moving forward, uh, will be offset by the increase of costs for staffing and materials. Um, just due to the, the annual cost inflators that happen for increased wages, increased and increased cost in retirement and health benefits, all that sort of thing. I, I, there's a, there's a law diminishing returns in effect here. And while we can reduce it a bit, and I intend to, uh, moving forward into the next three years, um, I don't anticipate a significant enough reduction to offset the increase over time. I guess that's what I'm saying. Does that answer your question?
No, but I'm just going to pass on.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, with, with your code compliance things, you know, we have the citation phase and then we move on to the notice violation and administrative fees. We talk cost recovery. Is this still applied the same way with the, uh, with the lien on assessed values that people don't pay? Assessed liens?
Uh, this type of cost, this type of cost recovery, uh, the fees that I'm proposing, uh, are a fee for service for that case. So when it reaches citation and we, we charge them, if they do not collect, it is legal for us to, uh, assess that value on their tax rolls. So yes, we can, we can lien and we can't do, and we can do an assessment. Uh, so that, that's fair. The fines however, any fines that accrue are entirely separate and they cannot, uh, be leaned. So this, this is, uh, so someone may get a reoccurring fine, uh, in addition to this cost. If they don't pay anything, the only thing that we'd be able to lean is this fee that is on, that is on this, uh, ordinance.
Right, that's the difference between a citation and, and administrative fees going through the process, correct? I, I was just curious because sometimes we, on the administrative side, sometimes we won't realize some of the cost recovery for as much as five years possibly. You know, I, I, I just, you know, just part of the conversation as it's, you know, it may hit the general fund for a little while before we actually see that cost return on some of the administrative fees going through the process.
I see, I see Julie popped up. Could you have a comment, Julie?
I just, uh, I guess I'd like to just distinguish between fines and fees. So fines have a, have a, a different purpose. Those are, um, collected in a different way. Those are, you know, to punish bad behavior. Um, the cost recovery piece, um, including cost recovery through liens, we made sure that the, that, we're not double collecting. We're not collecting through permit fees, any of the post citation costs, which would be charged to the violator and possibly recovered if necessary through a lien. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my, my question was, you know, um, with administrative fees and, and them being applied to, uh, the assessed taxes that, you know, on time. But we're beyond that now. Let's move on to the next one. Package page three ninety-six. Uh, the building department fee study twenty twenty bill, billable FTE calculations. This is based off a two hundred and sixty day working year.
Yes, the short answer is yes. Uh, the, the total amount of, of hours, uh, an employee, uh, has that, that we're responsible for paying for in a calendar year essentially, I guess that's the, how I'd explain it.
Yeah, um, do, do we cha- do we, uh, pay people, take lunches?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a standard.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm just curious, how long are the lunches each day?
I, you know, we're, we're required to give them a, as I understand it, either a half hour, hour lunch. Um, most of my staff are taking hour lunches.
Okay, and fifteen out, and fifteen minute breaks, two of them each day?
Agreed.
Okay, I just understand, trying, trying to work out the, uh, three seventy-one on a two sixty. That makes more sense. Off by one hour, but, or six hours, but, uh, okay. Um, to go on, uh, what, what, which part of this fee structure would a metal pre, pre-engineered building fall under? Because I, I see, I, I don't know if that's commercial, accessory dwelling, garage. It probably depends on what use it will have afterwards, correct?
Exactly, so, so to, uh, one of the items that I, I didn't bring up is that our current two thousand eight fee structure that was adopted by our board has over four hundred fee types. And each fee type is relevant to not just the occupancy category of the building, but the material and the, and the construction type of that building. And so it is incredibly complex when, and it doesn't accurately address, uh, the work that we do on average. Uh, if we break it down by the type of building and we apply an average, that's how we streamline these fees down to the, you know, I, I forget how many, but it's less than, it's around forty, uh, different fee types. So instead of, you know, what we're all used to in this county, which is a metal building that is used for this at this square footage, all we say is, what's your, what is the building for? Is this commercial? Regardless of the commercial, uh, construction type, uh, and regardless of the square, the square footage, on average, we're going to have about seventeen stops based on the data going back to twenty eighteen. Uh, if it's a garage, it may be an average of, you know, four to five stops. And so it depends on what it, what you're using it for as opposed to what it's made out of. Cause we're still going to, we're going to essentially on average be there the same amount of time. Uh, so when you say metal building, I say, is it a garage or is it a agricultural storage? Is it a commercial building? And then I can tell you what the fee is.
Okay, so with that, you'll be charging the same amount of days on the, the same amount of time on the, uh, plan checking?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Toffnelli, you have something to follow up with on that?
Yeah. I, I don't see how that's going to work, Doug. It's a metal building versus a, a, a wood frame building. You're, you're going to require special inspections, especially if concrete's over three thousand PSI. You're not going to go out and do sump tests, you're not going to break it. You're not going to go out and test the bolts, make sure the right torque, that's all special inspection. So, um, you're not going to be going out there as many times for a metal building as you would for a wood frame building to inspect all different aspects of that wood frame as it's going up. So I don't see the relationship between a metal building and a wood frame building, regardless if it's residential or commercial or a shed or a barn or whatever it is. There will be, again, special inspection and then, um, I, I'm, the, the engineer report for those metal buildings are submitted for, during the building plan. So most of that engineering part of it is, is a lot different than it is with a wood frame building. Although you still need the engineering for it, for wind velocity, but in our zone. But I don't see you going out as many times for a metal building as you would for a wood frame, given the fact that a wood frame, unless the only other part for special inspection would be if there are over three thousand PSI on the concrete that's required. That would be a special inspection lab going out for that part of it and then giving you the results to the building department. So, um, I could be wrong, but yeah. A difference of opinion on that?
Well, well, sir, based on my own experience on, on the difference between wood and steel construction, it really depends on the use, but I guess I'll take a, a, an empty storage building that has basic electrical in it as an example. Uh, your wood frame, your average wood frame is going to have a foundation inspection. Uh, we then, uh, don't go out again until the frame inspection, or sorry, we do a shear or frame inspection. Sometimes we do them together if this is a, a wood siding that's nailed, uh, and they're using that as their lateral. So let's assume that we're going to do the shear separately. So we do a foundation, then we come back for the shear. And then we come back for the frame, which encompasses all the trades and then, including the electrical. And then after that, we come back for a final. And that's not, that's not including any reinspects to, for, for errors or corrections. When you look at a steel building, we are looking at a foundation. It's a different foundation type, uh, there are different components. Uh, there are hairpins, there are, uh, you know, deeper footings, larger bolts, uh, specific patterns that have to be met. Uh, so the foundation sometimes might take a few minutes longer, but it's, it's essentially the same. Uh, then when we come back, technically, we're supposed to be doing a, a structural frame, which is akin to a shear, uh, where we collect the special inspection, uh, documentation. So we don't do the special inspections, but we collect the documentation and then we spot check their work. Uh, the, the code does, uh, require special inspection and we do, uh, we do collect the data from those, uh, inspectors, but it doesn't alleviate the responsibility from us of actually making sure that that got done correctly. Uh, and in the past, I've actually seen weld inspections that passed, uh, be done incorrectly and have missing welds. So we, we do check to make sure that it was done correctly. We collect the data. And then we come back for a frame when the steel building has had its cladding installed, it's electrical, mechanical and all that stuff. And then once again, a final. Uh, so in essence, it ends up being on average between four and five inspections, not counting, uh, the, uh, the rein inspections. So we're in the ballpark. And the time, the time is going to be different depending on the complexity of, of the materials, yes. But on average, uh, as our time studies have indicated, it's not, it's not enough to require a separate permit with different fees. And then the, the, the average and the ease of application of these fees outweighs the need to make it more complex than it is.
Let, let's then talk about plan check turnaround times, Doug. You know, if it's a new, let's just say a new commercial shell building, you know, um, is it going to still take twenty days for the first review with twenty hours on a pre-engineered building?
Uh, good question. And I would say the pre-engineered buildings, uh, doesn't alleviate our responsibility to make sure the, the data is accurate. And that, that's something that's been a longstanding discussion between the architects and engineers and the, and the, the code administrators. Because there, there's been a longstanding, uh, discussion about how much should a, a plan checker review the work of a licensed engineer? Uh, they're licensed and, uh, you know, the state would say they know what they're doing, therefore we should accept it. Well, uh, the Department of General Services for the State of California released a, a statement that identified that as long as a plan checker is making sure that the engineer followed the code, they're allowed to do it. Uh, they can't, they can't, uh, comment on methodology. They can only comment on if you say you're using this code, we're making sure you're using those values correctly. And the, and the interesting part about a, a pre-engineered steel building is they engineer the frame of the building, they engineer all the connections. We have to make sure all those connections are correct. In addition to that, they don't engineer the site-specific components. They rely on a local engineer to design the foundation separate of that steel building to comply with the soil conditions specifically for that site. And so our plans examiners, instead of looking at a, uh, you know, an engineered foundation that goes along with the complete engineering package of a building, they're looking at two different engineering packages. They're looking at the package for the steel structure and then they're comparing that to the data used by the, the engineer in order to determine what the foundation system should look like. So, uh, it's, it's apples and oranges, but the time is similar because where, um, a lot of the pre-manufactured data, uh, we, we spot check some of the, uh, the data entered into the computer system that generates that, that mapping. We're also making sure that that data, the end result of that data is transmitted correctly to the foundation design. Uh, and once again, our site-specific components are going to govern. So overall, I mean, like I said, going back and looking at the data and looking at our basic standards, uh, it would indicate currently that they are similar. There is minor differences. Um, but until we can get better data, um, what we have now seems to be consistent.
So, Mr. Toffnelli's brought this up before. A, a fee that a developer pays for one design on a house is initially high, but then they apply that fee on the plan check to the rest of the houses in the development. Now, I understand that ground is different across the county. We have a very diverse geology. And I understand the foundational aspect. But when it comes to the building, these are the same ones that are applied in Amador, Tuolumne, Stanislaus counties and far more. And they have far less check times than Calaveras County is trying to apply right now. I'm not sure about Tuolumne, you'd have to check that one. But I could go to other ones and they're over the counter.
Uh, I, I guess I'll break that down into the individual components. So a shell building, uh, in comparison to the new commercial structure. So our new commercial at, at eight thousand two eighteen, uh, you know, your average start to finish off viable structure and then you have your commercial shell and storage. If they go with a commercial shell that they intend to develop later, then rather than charge them for a new commercial, we would charge them the lower rate, which is, uh, just under half. And then when they come in for the tenant improvement, um, we essentially are charging them for the rest to develop the interior. Uh, so, so it's similar, for instance, because of the workload involved, uh, with a, you know, multifamily, or sorry, a, a, a new dwelling versus a master plan and, uh, taking master home permits off of the master plan. You're saving money with, because you're not having to do a, you know, a full review every single time of the building if you're coming in and doing improvements in the inside or, or reproducing the same design over and over again. So there's a benefit to doing it that way. Um, what was the other part about the, uh?
Uh, let's just, let's just skip over that with, with the pro- I'm proposing that, you know, as a board member, I would like to look at pro- possibly lowering the, the time when it comes to metal buildings and, and, and the price. Cause I don't see it. I don't see it at all and other counties don't either. And, and I, I mean, I understand different geology and having to check the engineering on a slab foundation in, in one area as opposed to another. But we have different areas where it says what that type of geology should be. As long as the engineer stamps it and puts it down that this slab's got like number eight steel at one foot on, one foot on center grid at four inches thick based on this geology, then you, you say, okay, that fits the area it's in. And then done. If it doesn't, then you redline it and tell them to fix it, you know, and then you have your second review. I, I, uh, sir, ref- respectfully on this one, on this one, of the entire thing, I disagree with you. Respectfully.
Uh, I, I understand what you're saying, sir. I guess I would, I would say that in response that when we do a plan review, it's not just the structural components that we're reviewing. And in commercial, we spend more time, uh, enforcing fire code requirements on the facility and the area around it. As an example, um, a, a single family dwelling, we're looking just at a driveway width and smoke generally. When we're looking at commercial, we have a twenty foot access lane, we have fire hydrants, we have onsite with fire flow, we have exit signage, we have, uh, disabled access, we have a series of things that whether it's a shell building or a, uh, new commercial building, it goes beyond the structural, which is why the- it goes beyond the structural, which is why the shell building is substantially less because we don't have, you know, as many ADA concerns, as many plumbing, mechanical, all those other concerns we're not looking at because it's a shell or storage. But the time spent in reviewing the site plan to make sure that it complies with all the fire code and board forestry regulations, it does factor into this time. It's not just the structural of the building itself. So it's entirely fair to say that we can look at streamlining, but what I'd want to do is maybe come back in the study session later to show your board the time it takes to review each item and then decide based on, because other jurisdictions have done this, where we say, okay, here are all the things that the code requires we look at in plan review. Here are all the things that are critical. Here are all the fire life safety that aren't critical and here are all the things that are in the code but may not be critical. And I could take direction from your board on what things I'm not going to look at in plan review. And that would change the time spent doing that review. This time is there to encompass everything that the code requires that we look at. So if your board decides that they want to direct our department to not enforce certain components, that is a fair thing to ask and our department will respond accordingly.
Yeah, I would be in favor of coming back because I disagree respectfully too on some of the things you said about even inspections. I've been doing steel buildings for all my life and when we pay for a special inspector, 99% of the time, the city or county accepts the special inspection report. Very, 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 very seldom do I see a city or a county inspector going up in a scissor lift to look at a weld. He doesn't even know what he's looking at most of the time. They don't. Even bolt inspection, I've never seen one take a torque wrench up and test bolts. Generally, that's why it's a special inspection, because it's outside the purview of a city or county inspectors. That's why they require a special inspection for it, because they're trained specifically to do that. And then roof inspection. If we're doing a pre-engineered metal building versus a wood frame building, you're going to go up and inspect that roof on a wood frame building to make sure the plywood is all nailed and the nails are center per center before you have them put shingles on it and roof it versus a pre-engineered building where the guys are going to go put and screw down to the rafters just that one roof. And most of the time, that's part of special inspection versus our inspector going up and looking around on that roof for the screws to be in the proper places and spacing that they're supposed to be in, although that may be something that we do after a special inspection, but I just don't see the rest of it being done. That's a double cost. That's being charged twice and special inspection fees are nowhere near the county's fees. They're way, way, way up there. So if we're going to say that our inspectors are going to be doing special inspection out there on the job site, then we should eliminate the necessity for special inspection for those type of buildings and just rely upon our inspectors going out and do it. Because again, you're paying twice according to what you're saying about them going out and looking at wells and making sure that everything's welded and going out and looking at bolts and testing bolts to make sure they're torqued in the proper and even the spacings on screws. So I think we, I would like to have, if we're going to look at inspections and we're going to look at the permit fees for in-house, going over the in-house for the permit, I'd be more than happy to sit in on that type of study session to go over it.
I would also, and to follow up on Mr. Toffenelli, I had 15 years in the construction industry solid doing custom homes, so I was more on the wood side. But those inspectors that do the special inspections are bonded, licensed through the state. They're taking on the responsibility for that. And at the point where you start double-checking on it, I think you may be putting the county in a position that we're taking responsibility, that we're double-checking their responsibility. So at a certain point, we have to be able to let go and trust that the state's certified these inspectors to do their job right. You know, and yes, it is not a perfect world. There's always someone that's going to be a little bit off and in the interest of safety, it is always best to double-check, but at what point are we going over and beyond? Mr. Toffenelli is absolutely right about the cost on those special inspections, to the best of my knowledge, unless things have changed since I got into the water industry. So I would be in favor of discussing this further during a study session also.
Does this affect this fee structure moving forward? Is this something that we will need to bring forward first or do we want to move this fee structure in based on the data I have and then we can discuss the moving parts of maybe adjusting those fees at a later date based on more information provided in the fee study?
I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I would agree with you, sir. Fine-tuning it in the future, definitely. But it needs to be on your radar, you know? I don't want to hit you with it later, you know?
Very good. Very good. It is on my list. I will bring it to you with our, I'll do a full review of the shell building requirements and bring something forward for your board to consider in a study session.
Thank you very much. Any further board questions? Public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I would like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion from a board member.
I would move this item as presented to us.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. You know, out of turn this time, you know, just for how hard we were on you, Mr. Oliver, I would like to second this.
Thank you, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. We do appreciate the good work, Doug. We just got to fine-tune this in the future.
And I agree, Doug. Thank you for the hard work you've done here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And your staff.
Okay, keep my mic on. I'm still working. Item 19, can we take a five-minute break or a 10-minute break? Item 19, planning. Conduct a public hearing. Find that the project is a later activity per Section 15168(c) of the CEQA guidelines under the EIR prepared for the general plan and adopt a zoning map amendment for APNs Authorize publication of summary ordinance and brief property descriptions. Mr. Mauer.
Good afternoon, Chair Stabler, members of the board. Peter Mauer for the Plating Department. I guess that may be the last time I will say that. This is a brief cleanup for the zoning map update that we did in early March. We realized during the planning commission hearings, there were some edits that we needed to make, but because they were not included in the overall notice that was provided, we had to re-notice this and provide a separate hearing on these items.
Mr. Mauer, excuse me. I am opening the public hearing now.
Okay.
My apologies.
So as I said, this is just a final cleanup of the comprehensive zoning map update that we did in March. So there are four separate changes being done. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I can share the screen and walk through each of those, but I don't know if that's necessary unless you have questions. Happy to answer any questions you have on these. I have contacted each property owner as well as the surrounding property owners were notified by mail, sort of the standard notification process because of the limited number of parcels being addressed here. I did have conversations with two of the property owners. They're in agreement with this. I have not heard anything from any other, either the property owners subject to these changes or any of the adjacent property owners. Would you like me to walk through each of these or is the information in your packet sufficient?
The information in my packet is sufficient. Is that agreed by the board? Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Yeah, it's sufficient, sir.
So this, as stated in the agenda item, this is considered a later activity covered under the EIR for the general plan and we're recommending that you approve this. The zoning map changes would become effective 30 days from today. We'll be publishing the notices required.
Thank you, sir, very much for the good work. Are there any specific questions by board members?
I think we should find some questions since this last time meeting with him.
Do you want to drag this out to midnight? We can fill up a couple of pages right now, Ms. Callaway.
Well, I think we could negotiate with his, about his staying or leaving.
Any hook we can use, Peter.
We could always tell him, Peter, we're going to delay this item till May 11th and we'll need you to stay until then.
I would have to defer that to one of my very competent staff people.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? With that, if there's no further comments by Mr. Mauer, I will go to public comment.
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, let's give it a few extra seconds just because this is an important thing for a lot of people out there. Mr. Mauer did give notice and talked to a few people. Mr.?
I was just confirming. I mean, some of these are in my district, but I haven't been, no one's come to me. Doesn't sound like anybody's come to Peter. We've reached out.
Very, very good. And I have no doubt that that's the case. With that, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion by a board member amended for Peter to stay.
This is a reflection of how much we admire Peter's work and that, you know, the stuff he brings is always complete and he's got a great staff. And the great work will continue and with great sadness, the last motion I could make on Peter on here, but so moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. Can we have a second?
Maybe. I may, well, we're going to drag it out.
As long as we possibly can, Rita.
I just won't call for the vote.
I will second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Please do visit.
Thank you very much. Once again, it's really been a pleasure serving you and the county. I will miss everyone, but I'm looking forward to retirement.
I guess that means I got to move on to supervisor's announcements. Mr. Garamendi. Ms. Callaway.
We had the CSAT conference last week. It was all Zoom. It really went well, but one of the things that was very evident is that the other counties were in the same position that we are statewide and people not getting their shots and not really knowing how they're going to manage it. They have the vaccines. They just don't have people wanting to step up to do it. And this is across rural, urban and suburban counties. Just was a good way to know that we're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Mr. Toffenelli?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fuldorff?
Last Saturday, the city had a re-grand opening of a mix of new and change of ownership of businesses, about seven of them downtown. So there was a big celebration for that on Saturday. So things are starting to turn and looking good.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. Just a note of interest for the community. This Saturday will be Kids Fishing Day at Murphy's Park. If you have a child eighth grade or younger, I don't want to exclude those ones that aren't in kindergarten yet, please bring them up to Murphy's Park. There's going to be quite a bit of fish stocked. It's going to be a good day and I'll be there cooking hot dogs and giving out waters for anybody that wants to be there and I will be sanitary as I do it. Anything else? Thank you very much and we'll adjourn this board meeting. Close session, yes.